We'll call this meeting in order of the Laramie County School District Number One Board. We complete stand to the place of the leaders.
The leaders of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone to this sort of special meeting added September. There seemed to be enough topics for information and action that we thought we would add it to our calendar for September. So thank you, everyone who's here watching us online at the Zoom meeting. And now at this time, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I do not have any adjustments to the agenda tonight.
So seeing none, Madam Chair, I move to approve the, to adopt the agenda with the agenda. Second, for the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. The agenda is adopted. And now we come to the part of the meeting for recognition. Are there any items to do with that? I believe not.
Madam Chair, we do not have any recognitions tonight.
Okay. Moving on, this is the opportunity for the public to address the board for three minutes on anything related to the school. And is there anyone?
Madam Chair, if we have any of our visitors that are online and would like to speak, if they would raise their hand, we'll allow them to speak. The other way, if you are just on the phone, if you press star six, that'll raise your hand.
And if anyone is out there and wants to wait till the end of the meeting, we have another opportunity at the end of our business tonight. But meanwhile, raise your hands, we can tell you need to, you want to address the board.
Madam Chair, I have nobody who's raised their hand.
Okay, very good. Once again, if there's something that occurs to you during the meeting, you can address the board at the end, and you can always contact us by email. The upcoming meetings, on September 10th, tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we are going to meet with our new activities director, Tom Siemens, and actually all the activity directors for the high schools with Dr. Tracy Kimmy, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to discuss equity in sports. And then September 21st is our regularly scheduled board meeting. At 5:00 p.m. we'll have a work session and 6:00 p.m. regular board meeting. And now, individual board communications. Does anyone have any? Yes, Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two things to recap things. I have participated in two separate boundary waiver requests that circulated amongst the committee, and on both of those, we approved or adopted the recommendations that the principals had made. So we were able to do that. I also participated last night in a really fun event, and I'll let Dr. Mr. Rennie talk a little bit more about it, but we were naming the new school. So I'll let her talk more about that. It was a fun event.
And we'll go right to Ms. Rennie, if you want to go over and touch on this one.
Thank you. Yes, I had, I had the pleasure of working with Mrs. Tyler and Mr. Wiederspan along with four students from our district, Hobbs, Jessup, Davis, and Prairie Wind Elementary, to submit some suggestions from the survey list and also some that they brought to the table on their own for naming the 5-6 school. And we did narrow it down. I would put that out there, but we've asked them to do a little more homework and come back with maybe some suggestions for very special, great individuals to honor in our district as well. So everyone's just gonna have to stay on the edge of the seats before we get that out there. But the board will be voting on these three to four options on the 21st of this coming month. So thank you very much.
And just a little footnote, it's a 5-6 school that will be on Powderhouse Road.
Yeah, Fort Laramie Trail.
Fort Laramie Trail.
And.
And, yeah, there you go. Anyone else want to address the board? Chair, some information? Yes, Mr. Wiederspan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick item. I have been contacted by several individuals expressing concern that there is no student crossing signage in front of the new Cary Junior High School. And I know that that's been brought up, and I think it's been brought to the attention of the city. And maybe we're going to talk about that a little bit later. But do we have any information on what the status of that is currently?
At this point, I don't. I do believe that we've turned that over to the city. Dave, do you have any other information?
Madam Chair, Dr. Wiederspan, we have reached out to the city. I will tell you that the signage that is, is there is actually what was called out or required by the traffic study and the project. And I will tell you, the signage is a little different from what you're seeing in front of the old Cary, because the actual entrance to the building of the new Cary is on T. Bird Drive, not Pershing. So it will require a far different solution. But we did meet with the city last Friday to look at traffic and some different signage, and we will continue to meet with them. I do think there'll be some minor adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's to clarify, Mr. Bartlett, that we've done what was planned and what was designed, but you're looking further to see what could be done. And you're looking at further actions at that intersection, right?
That, that is correct, Madam Chair. You know, part, part of what we've, when we talked with the city, part of the issue is actually getting our students trained to push the button to have the crosswalk engage. So Derek has worked with his kids and his staff over there. We are looking at a potential left-hand only turn onto Pershing and some other adjustments. And you know, typically, what I would tell you is in all of our schools, you know, the end of the day is the busiest time for about 15, 20 minutes, and it does take us about four to six months to kind of get the patterns figured out. We've actually looked over there, part of the north parking to use for parent staging, looking at some one-way signage actually in the Oki parking lot to get parents to drop off there as well. So there's a lot of little solutions that will add up to making it safe.
Thank you very much. And the other, Mr. Breen? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed in the board docs that there will be a proclamation made this evening regarding honoring Constitution Day, September 17th. And I'm hoping that our schools will have appropriate lessons for that day. But I would like to add to this Constitution Day. Of course, we know on Friday this week will be the anniversary, the 19th anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attack. But I think there's another date in September that aligns very well with constitutionality. That is, I believe, September 15th, 1963, in Birmingham, Alabama, where four little girls are murdered in a church where a bomb is set off. And as we're moving towards diversity and understanding culture diversity in this community, I think that there should be some discussion about what was taking place in 1963 in this country and honoring the Constitution. So yes, honor what took place on 9/11, but also let's take a look back in 1963, what took, in Birmingham, and the bombing of the church. I was at Ground Zero there, crossed the street at the United States Civil Rights Museum, and participated in the park, an interactive park showing where dogs and water cannons were set to harm people, were peacefully protesting. So in this, this time of troubles in this country, I think this is a good educational opportunity over this week to reflect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Mr. Breen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on the traffic, I walked by Cary about 7:40 on the first day of school, and there seemed to be a problem with a very long line of traffic turning left into Cary. In fact, it was backed up almost to the stoplight at Forest. But then I went again on Tuesday at about the exact same time, and there was only like two cars that turned left in there. The difference was there were two community police officers and two police officers standing. Now, they weren't directly driving, may have been earlier, but they were just standing down there at that intersection. So I don't know if people just educated themselves that maybe that wasn't the best way to go and turning left into there, or if they had actually intervened in the traffic. But it was much better on the second day than it was on the Thursday. So I think we have a good traffic design there for people. Just following.
Right. I think like Mr. Bartlett said, there's gonna be a lot of those educational pieces that are gonna feed into learning the system. That's all, yeah. Okay. And speaking of the proclamation, is this the right time to pick that up?
You bet. Madam Chair, I'll read the proclamation if you would like for me to. It says, "School proclamation, Constitution Week 2020, whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of our drafting of our Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize a patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution is an historic achievement of our founding fathers and the oldest written national Constitution, it is a strong, it is a strong foundation for our republic in the 21st century as it was in the 18th century. And whereas, as we celebrate this document's profound impact on our everyday lives, may all Americans strive to uphold its vision of freedom and justice for all. Therefore, now therefore, I'm Marguerite Herman, Chair, Board of Trustees of Laramie County School District Number One, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, to be Constitution Week at all schools.
2020, I believe.
Twenty, yeah, it should be 2020. Sorry, we'll get that corrected. To be Constitution Week for all schools in Laramie County School District Number One, and ask our students to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. And witness thereof, I have here undue, unto set my hand and cause to affix the great Laramie County School District Number One on the 17th day of September in the year of the Lord 2020, 17th, and of the independence of the United States of America. And it gets your signature.
Very good. Thank you. And did anyone want to comment on this at this time? Or that is a proclamation we'll, we'll issue by the school district, by the school board. Thank you for reading that. Okay, moving on, there's no more news to share. Reports from the superintendent and staff.
Madam Chair, just want to talk a little bit about the reopening of schools, and just really want to thank all of our students, parents, teachers, and staff members, and our administrators for the great start to our school year. We've had some hiccups, and we'll be visiting about some of those tonight. Really appreciate everybody working together to get schools open. We've got some feedback from some people regarding that. We've had some hiccups from virtual school a little bit to try to get that stood up, and I'll let Mr. Newton talk about that, and I'll probably add a few things. But to start out with, we asked for comments from our administrators, and I would ask Ms. Dr. Kenny to come up and kind of give you an overview of some of the general things that they talked about.
Good evening, Chairman Marguerite Herman and members of the board trustees. Today we met with the Instructional Leadership Council, which includes all of our principals and associate principals, curriculum coordinators, and other school leaders across the district, and asked them to provide some feedback on the onset of that meeting regarding those things that have went well throughout the first week of school, and other issues that may still remain as challenges or were challenges, and then how they mitigated those challenges so that we can share that across the district. We went through all of their responses, which came from every one of the elementary and secondary schools, including some other school leaders, and themed across their responses. And so we thought we would just share those things that went well and some other things that are some challenges or were challenges. First of all, astounding, or the most frequent response was how happy our schools were with people cooperating with all the protocols, especially wearing masks and social distancing, how positive students and parents and faculty and classified staff were coming back to school. Everybody was just really happy to be back in school. Interestingly, four elementary schools noted that they recognized immediately a decrease in just some student behaviors because of the social distancing, which I thought was interesting. Is the lining not going to recess, coming back in, or other transitions keeping that six feet apart? It's just kind of natural for young ones to engage in some horseplay at times, and then it goes too far. And so they had recognized just some smoother transitions because of that. Over half of the schools reported increased parental involvement, either, you know, through some of the communications that they've been holding throughout the first week in support of student homework. Also, their parents and faculty and students were reporting more comfortableness with using the campus platform and setting that up with some of the elements that have been recommended to the Department of Instruction. On the side regarding challenges that we met the first week was also doing with Canvas, that some faculty still need some additional support in the actual design of those Canvas pages, some transitions with personnel. And as you know, while we were setting up Cheyenne Virtual School, there were several transitions with faculty which required some sudden hiring in some cases and just movement. But they were able to successfully move through that. Some of the additional protocols that come in with sanitizing and transitions and so forth, those were challenging. Cheyenne Virtual School and scheduling, maybe especially at the secondary levels. But I would also, again, note the positiveness of some of these, most of these comments on the challenge side. I don't know how many times I've read, please, we are not complaining, we are happy to be back. Or we are not seeing these as challenging as what they were last week. And that, pretty much, that was overwhelming as well is regarding any of the protocols. People were getting more comfortable with it, used to those protocols, and just accommodating them. It was much more smoother this week than last week. Personally, in central office, empathy and appreciation and sometimes sympathy really towards Darlene Davis and Don Guppy, who filled it and dispatched, and all the clerical staff across the district. They were dealing with a lot of quandaries. We just kept working through them day by day. And I can note the last couple days, the phones have really quieted down. So that would be a very quick summary of today's input.
And could I ask, Dr. Kenny, what is the enrollment now in the virtual school? And is it settled down?
We've got a, that'll be one of our reports. So I'll get her back up there and look you on that.
That's all right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Next, I was gonna ask Merrick Watts to come up and talk a little bit about the district website that we put together. I shouldn't say we, her and her group have put together with all of our information. Merrick, I'll go ahead and move this where you get you up there.
Oh, thank you.
There you go. Now you can drive.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, I appreciate this opportunity to be able to show you some new features to our district website. We've been trying to get some information out there to help communicate to folks about our district reopening and the reopening plans and that sort of thing. So on screen here, I do have the website opened. One area that would be very helpful, I think, to all of you would be this section called Featured Items. And under that, we try to keep some of the updated pieces to our COVID plans and everything. The first link under Featured Items is a page that will direct you to all of the school individual reopening plans, as well as the district reopening plan, and the athletics and activities plan. So that, that is a helpful site, or portion of the site. Go back here. We'll go back to the homepage, and this other page here, District Reopening and COVID-19 Resources. This is something that we've spent the past month trying to focus on. And I'll just show you a few of the pieces of this section. This focus on learning square right here with the apple of the stethoscope is actually going to serve as our district dashboard, if you will. Right now, we've indicated that we're open in Tier One. And if that were to change, that will also reflect if we're in Tier Two or Tier Three or anything like that. So we've got, we've got that available. Some of the other documents that I know Dr. Brown had brought forth at previous meetings include the What If document, and that's available here for parents, students in our community. In this section right below, we plan to provide updates in the form of news releases or little articles. Right now, the athletics and activities attendance is kind of a, something that people had quite a few questions about. So we've got that information in there, and then another way to get back to that activities plan. So, let's see. Got that. And just a couple of other documents here that we've got out there. We've got a, some criteria on masks. You know, of course, we're asking for masks, face coverings to be at least to apply. All of this information's been provided to our principals as well so that they can share it in their newsletters. So you can see all of those types of documents. And then right here in the center of this section, in this area with the buttons, again, we've got school reopening plans. So that directs you back to that page. This button will direct you directly to the Cheyenne Virtual School information page, which is also available in various other places on the website. But this district toolkit is actually the piece that we've, we've got a variety of documents. We've worked with the Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department to, to put these together. We've sent these out again to our, our schools, and they're available to the public here as well. But when you click into each of these, they're available, I'll just blow one of these up. I won't get too much into the weeds with this. But you can see, we've got the information about the Tier One learning and what that looks like, Cheyenne Virtual School, and that sort of thing. So, but, real, now I just.
There you go.
Thank you. So as you go through, we've got Quick Facts, we've got a health screening guide for parents that I think is pretty handy. This has gone out as well. So when they are looking at trying to screen their, their students, all of these documents are available in two places and are translatable.
So Merrick, could you answer a question as we go along?
Oh, of course.
I don't know why I ask this in terms of, it triggered me on the health screening questions. So I've had several parents contact me about the way that we're doing these health screenings. We have one way for elementary, and parents use a code, and, you know, they screen their kids during, before they go to school. But then junior high kids are screened, junior high in high school are screened differently. And those are, they're self-reporting. Is that correct? So the concerns that came up, and I'm just asking, we'll see if this is the right, the concerns that came up is we have some junior high kids that are self-reporting things that may not be true. They're using it a way to get out of a math class. One parent had their child say he was having shortness of breath. The mother was called. The mother said he was fine when she dropped him off, no issues, tried to talk to the school nurse, and that child had to come home because that child self-reported that they were having shortness of breath. There was nothing wrong with that child. So the concern that I have is just kind of tweaking a little bit more on that. If we're only giving students that ability, I think there could be error, room for error. So I would just say, are we working on that?
Always. Then it'll keep, continually changes. The amount of time with fever, with non-fever medication has changed just recently. But again, we want to use as much common sense as we can there. Like we talked previously, if somebody has asthma and they have a little shortness of breath this time, they have, I've got a friend that's got, he's allergic to Sage, and this is a terrible time of the year for him. So, I mean, we've gotta use a little common sense there. But yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work on all those issues. We're probably gonna be overly cautious to start out with, but we'll continue to work on all that.
And I'll just follow up. Thank you very much for that. I think the follow-up is parents want to be part of that discussion. And this parent really felt like the district was not including her in being part of the solution, and they only took the student's report, and then that student had to leave. So I just, we need to know that it's a team approach. Student parents should be involved in some of those discussions, and we should, we should listen to them as well.
Well, and Dr. Brown, members of the board, I too, I would encourage parents to contact the school. I know that the school nurses are very responsive to this type of thing. And if they have questions, they can contact the district office as well.
It was a school nurse that sent this child home and did not listen to the parent at all. But, yet again, it is, it's a learning process. Right. No, it's a learning process. It's clearly a learning process. I get it. And I think it really wanted to jump in, yes.
Back to your, this looks really great. And I, I was, I'm curious, is there a way, or how do you plan on, because the plans do change, and parents, how do we highlight the new part that, you know, what's different for parents in this?
Okay.
How do you plan on doing that?
Absolutely. I was going to mention that, too. All of this information will be constantly changing. Obviously, this is a very fluid situation. You know, we're all kind of flying by the seat of our pants a little bit. But for example, when you click into, I'll just click back into this, this first document, we've got a revised by date that will be on all of these documents. And as they change, we'll always ensure that the most up-to-date version based on health guidelines from the Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department and the Wyoming Department of Health are followed and communicated. I think that's been a great asset to us as well. Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department has reviewed all of these documents and has signed off, as has our head nurse, Janet Farmer.
Madam Chair, very quickly.
Yes, the three.
Merrick, my question, I was piggybacking off of trustee Rennie here. We know that the information regarding the pandemic is constantly, it's very fluid. The fluidity is crazy. Is it possible, as you go into this, that there is a note to remind parents, please check regularly?
Yeah.
Because things may change. Mr. Bartlett talked about retraining kids to press the button to cross the street. Well, adults sometimes fail to realize they need to go back and read it over again. So is it possible, as, as people get into the site, that we have a notice, please check regularly as changes are occurring?
Absolutely. Yes. And really, we, we welcome suggestions. If, if it appears like we've got some pieces that, that could be missing, just, just let us know. We'll take a look and in consultation with the Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department and senior leadership and, and all parties involved, you know, we'll definitely. You know, we'll definitely get the most up-to-date, accurate information out there.
We have, we've also done press releases and I know that some of the buildings have sent out specific things, specific to their building if they've had to change and things like that on the line.
Madam.
Yes.
Thank you. I think you did a wonderful job. And so thank you for bringing all of this to us. I was curious on some of the health notifications and the changes that we've had in the past. It might just be one thing that changes or two things that change. It's not often the whole entire thing. It kind of seems like it's kind of squeaking along a little bit with one or two. So would it be possible to asterisk the ones that are, so parents don't get tired of, well, that is all the same, even though, could we highlight maybe the one or two changes? Some way, asterisk, different color, I don't know, whatever. You're really good at that. But I just find everybody's in a hurry and myself included. And so when we go through and we read something and we read a lot of what we've already read, then we're not, you know, maybe tuned in to looking for that one, that's one or two items that are different.
That's a great idea. And I think that, you know, in the spring, when we closed and we had the COVID resources page, I know that Dr. Kenny and team worked hard to get that done. And so we will continue to do that with these documents as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bowles.
I was noticing that when you brought up that one and you showed the revised thing was laying out the bottom and very unnoticedable, I wondered if we couldn't put the, when it was revised on this dashboard here, so that people would see it right away and maybe even have a color code so that if something was changed recently, that's would pop out a little bit more so.
That's a, that's a wonderful idea. So we'll, we'll take that suggestion as well. Appreciate all, all of the feedback. There are just a couple of other pieces that I would draw your attention to. And then if you have any other thoughts, go back down to this COVID resources page quickly. In these buttons here, we've got some community resources, a link directly to Governor Gordon's page, his COVID page. Testing locations are available with a map. This one's kind of, I'll, I'll click into this because it's, this is updated directly through the Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department. I'm sure most of you are familiar with this page, but it's just a great dashboard. We've got the, the link to the Wyoming Department of Health. The site testing locator is, is the piece that, that I thought was pretty neat. And what it'll do is it gives you a map that, that lists all the testing locations. And then when you click in there, it gives you details about the, the locations and the hours of operation and all sorts of great things. So I think that, that's the, the website here in a nutshell. On the homepage, I'll go back to that quickly because we've got, I'll just draw your attention to, we've got a help card for live streaming the sporting events. You might get questions about that. And it goes into detail about how to do that. The technology help page is very thorough and gives a lot of information about Canvas and online learning and that sort of thing. But yeah, I just would encourage you to continue to, to utilize our website and we will work diligently to make sure that it's up to date.
And Mary, while you're up there, could you show people where to find the survey on the residence area?
Oh, of course. Go back to.
Cause I, I've had a couple of people contact me and they have trouble finding it from the homepage. So just, if you just pointed out, that might be helpful.
This, this is actually a new, with the revision of, with the website, this news and events button right here along the right-hand side.
And there it is.
We've got a ton of information on this, this page as well. But if you go to this information right here, this has the resolution and the link to the survey and the triad map and everything.
And just a reminder to people, we're, we're asking people to get it in by the 15th.
15th, yeah. We have over 500 responses already.
Oh, great. And, and we got a thumbs up and a trippy eagle on Sunday.
Okay, excellent. So good. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Reed is gone.
Just, just one comment about the virtual school. I know, I see that you have information on the virtual school on the website. And judging from some of the questions that I've had from both students and parents, I think a lot of people are having difficulty conceptualizing this as an actual school. Because, you know, I get telephone calls and they say, well, you know, a school has started, I've only got three of my classes. Who do I call? Well, I assume the guidance is the same as it would be for any other school in the district. You know, contact your teacher, contact the principal if you have questions. Parents can call the principal. And I'm sure they, I assume that the students and the parents enrolled in the virtual school have all that contact information available to them. And they're free to call the, the virtual school principal, just like they would any other school principal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll have a little more information on that here in just a minute too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else from this class? Thank you very much. And I, I want to add to other remarks. This is well done. And I, I must say, when there's something that needs to be changed or, you know, you guys are extremely quick getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
And next, we will talk a little bit about the virtual school. So I'll have Dr. Newton come up. We have had a few glitches with the virtual school. I know he's going to talk a little bit about that. We're working through that. We've tried to be fairly forgiving and trying to not have some hard deadlines and things there, which have caused us some problems. But I'm going to let Dr. Newton take over. I'll add in wherever.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Madam Chair, members of the board. Thirty-seven days ago, this board hired the principal for Cheyenne Virtual School. Today, we were working with students who had questions on AP Calculus. We've come a long, long way in a very short amount of time. We have built what I believe is the largest school in Wyoming. We currently have 1,926 students enrolled. 948 of the students are in the elementary. 978 of the students are in the secondary. As a reference point, Wyoming Virtual Academy, which serves students across the entire state, has half the enrollment that we do. As you may recall, we did set a deadline of August 10th to get, give us time to prepare for staffing, get teachers assigned and such. But as Dr. Brown mentioned, based on family need, we didn't treat that as a hard deadline. We wanted to accommodate families for what they needed most. And since that original due date, we have enrolled 387 new students. So Mr. Weigel's first crack at staffing, you can imagine, has changed drastically with 387 more students showed up who needed a teacher. These, just the number of kids that enrolled past the deadline is larger than most elementary schools. An effort this large, under pressing time constraints, doesn't come without its share of problems, no doubt. The school has all the important features of elementary school, junior high school, and a high school combined. Staffing, schedule changes, tech glitches, enrollment transfers from home schools, graduation checks, Hathaway eligibility checks, they're doing it all. And I'd like to provide some information on each of the component pieces of that. But while I did say it has its share of problems, as one of our former leaders liked to say, there are actually opportunities for success. The enrollment is constantly changing. I believe when Mr. Weigel first staffed the school in the elementary, we had two teachers per grade level. Now we have between five and six per grade level. So getting those kids not only enrolled, but set up, is taking a little longer than those who told us they wanted to enroll in early August. So on balance, what I'm going to be sharing with you is true for almost all kids, but the lived experiences of an individual family, like Mr. Reed has mentioned, could be different. I think it's important to talk a little bit about the platform we partnered with. Edgenuity has experienced a 267% increase in new customers alone through this pandemic and has greatly expanded their, their existing customers. They enrolled 45,000 new students across the nation yesterday. So this is a massive operation. It is a solid company that's providing a great service for us. But we have to remember, we are in the middle of a pandemic and being able to get them to do for us what we need them to do, isn't as easy as just clicking a button. And so some of those issues took a little longer to resolve than we had hoped. And the sheer volume of our own kids just slowed us down a little bit. Student by student, we had to get the students registered and enrolled for what they need. In the secondary, that included student by student, all thousand of them, or nearly a thousand of them, going through and seeing what classes they've taken, what classes they still need, and getting them the equivalent class that Edgenuity offers and getting those turned on. So any act like that times a thousand, or a thousand, just simply takes a long time. So there are some delays for those who are still enrolling. If you enroll today, we likely won't have you set up by the start of business tomorrow. It's just going to take some time because we want to do it right. No different than when students come to a brick and mortar school, they're not sitting in class 10 minutes after they walk in the door. There's a certain amount that needs done for the registration and so forth. For, as far as our teaching staff goes, we believe that K through eight, all of our teachers are in place. Nine through 12, almost all of the sections are in place. Students are certainly enrolled K-12 and are certainly making progress on the platform. But the ability for a teacher to connect with them in the secondary, we're at the mercy of finding stray sections to, to help them out. So the students are making progress in their courses with a live teacher of record in most of our nine through 12 sections, but a couple of them, the newly formed ones, we're still trying to find those teachers of record. So the students are making progress on the computer side and the virtual school administrative staff is helping with any questions they have in the meantime. On the hardware side, we've had hundreds of parents who have told us they don't, do not have the technology. And I'd like to give a shout out to the Department of Technology on a number of fronts. Kyle McKenna has made it clear that there is a device for every student who needs one. We, every student who needs one doesn't necessarily have one in their hands today. The problem is, we had over 100 parents who said they didn't show up the day we handed out technology, can they come get it now? And I know that Kyle has reassigned a couple of his people to sit at the old carry and hand out technology as people drive out to get it. So if you may hear that somebody doesn't have or has a technology shortage, it's simply because they haven't come to get it. We certainly haven't waited. On the tech access side, I think there have been a few parent frustrations with certain aspects of the pro, the, the platform that were blocked on the internet. Keep in mind, we have a filtering system in place for good reason, to protect our kids. And Kyle and his folks had to go through step by step which sites were being blocked, make a good decision whether it ought to be unblocked. And in that meantime, the kids couldn't get through that particular filter. But I was assured yesterday that all those filter issues have been resolved. And if any new ones come up, they will attack those case by case. So again, I, I think individual families may have had some bumps in, in the rollout. But I might add that in my time as a building administrator, we had plenty of angry parent phone calls about being mis-scheduled in a class and, and empty class periods and too many kids in this class, why can't I be in another? And so I think many of those concerns, we certainly need to resolve them. But I wouldn't say they're atypical of many of the other kinds of concerns that we field in brick and mortar schools on a day-by-day basis. I'm very proud and pleased with the way the virtual school staff has come together to work diligently to quickly resolve those problems. When, I, I think I may have mentioned this at the last report, when, when I look at the timestamp of the emails that I receive from them and it's, they, they sent them at three o'clock in the morning, it's a, it's a, a very pointed reminder of the kind of work they're putting in to make this a great experience for our kids. I would also, this last week or so, week or two maybe even, it's been all hands on deck to try and help the virtual school. And I know that DOT has reallocated many staff members, our building guidance counselors that went to hand, our graduation coaches, our instructional coaches, and our curriculum coordinators have all dropped the work that they certainly had to do and will have to do upon their return and went over there to help in any way they could. And then all that on balance, I think, has made for a, a pretty darn good experience for nearly 2,000 kids in a very, very short period of time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Breen, starting.
Dr. Breen, how fluid is the movement right now in virtual school? I, I heard from some teachers this past weekend that there is some fluidity compelling some of their classes to be collapsed and moving them part-time, virtual school, part-time, face-to-face. So how fluid is our situation right now?
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, that's a very good question. It's fluid in a couple of ways. In these times where we have to be very responsibly, responsible in fiscal matters, we just cannot out of good conscience teach a section with six kids in it. And so the idea of collapsing sections in order to free up teachers to be able to teach, you move the teachers where the kids are. And so there has been some of that. And I'm sure that is a bit frustrating, but it, it's inevitable. I think there's also been the need to be flexible. On the schools end, we wrote, and we still intend to enforce after families have a chance to get settled in, the idea that we don't want kids jumping back and forth in their enrollment constantly. But I think in our attempt to bring stability, we can't travel all over families who need us to be responsive and to help them right now and not enforce rules on them right now. So we've had some parents who thought they needed to be at the virtual school and they've already decided that they want to go back. And so we have broken our own rule and we've, and quite honestly, I'll just speak for myself, I don't make any apologies for breaking that rule because I know it's in the best interest of our kids. And so we might have students who would come back to our brick and mortar schools three or four, five days after instruction has started. But I think it's important to note that they are not leaving, having been on school for the last four or five days, they were just doing it elsewhere in our district. And I'd also note that if a student moved in from Missouri today, we would teach him. And so we are hoping that that levels out very, very soon. But when you hear the panic in families' voices saying, please reconsider, I think that is in our community's best interest.
Madam Chair, quick follow-up. And what you're speaking about earlier, as you introduced the, the virtual school, Dr. Newton, you talked about even before the virtual school, you had decisions had to be made, X, Y, and Z. And of course, when we start schooling, you have X, a, a number of sections and say, Mr. Breen, look, there's seven kids in that class. That's not going to roll. We're going to have to collapse it. I, I understand that. But a question I have in follow-up is this. Is there a point in time where we're going to have to say, we're not going to be jumping around, we keep you in place? At one time, you know, concerned about kids, well, after six weeks, I don't like this class, I want to move to this class. Is there a point in time where we're going to say, you signed up, you stay?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, I think the rule that we originally wrote is a good one. It's going to allow people to come to virtual if the health conditions warrant it, but we're going to hold them back from coming to the brick and mortar schools to return until quarter. So I think we absolutely intend to enforce that rule. I think it's just enforcing it yet is a bit premature. And I think this first go is going to be the time where we need to show that flexibility. If somebody decides that after second quarter, they want to come back, everyone is very well aware of what this is and what it isn't. We're seeing some families who completely underestimated the role that they're going to have to play as parents. have to play as parents in helping their students from that virtual environment, and some have just realized that their life circumstances can't support it. So because this was so brand-new, and because there's a public health crisis underlying on all, at least in this first short period of time, we do want to remain flexible.
Madam Chair, just quickly, your observation. Dr. Newton, that's perfectly logical to me, and even when I was in the classroom, I understood that first couple of weeks of school, there was a lot of flux taking place, and there was going to be fluidity with students. So your observation there is absolutely right on, and thank you.
And with all the students coming into your classroom, never leaving.
I think one of the issues is with some of the issues that we've had, the glitches with trying to get Edgenuity to match with our instructional, our student information system and some of those things. If we had been able to match that up a little bit earlier, we may not have been quite as flexible. But I think with some of the issues that we've had there, we're trying to be a little more flexible right now.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Breen responds.
Madam Chair, thank you. Dr. Newton, just a quick question. I guess my question stems from my experience having been a principal of a school with five hundred students and no additional administrative support. So we have a school with almost two thousand students, and we have a principal. Does our principal have any additional administrative support? And how is she doing?
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, this Hafner is unbelievable. She, I called her right before I came over here, and I asked her how she was, how things were going. And I wrote it down because she said, it's going even better now than it was earlier this morning. So she has more energy than ten people, and she's working harder than ten people. At this time, she is the only actual administrator. We have had some of our folks that we call student support facilitators, which some have mistaken for principals, that have provided some support over there as well.
We had three of them going out.
I'm sorry?
We had three of them.
Yep. Three of those people have been over. And she also has a full-time instructional coach, Katie Dykstol, who is one of our homegrown, very, very talented young adults. And she is serving as an instructional coach, but far more beyond that, too. So at this time, she is the only actual hired administrator, but she has other administrative support.
Just as a follow-up, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that we don't burn this individual out and we find that she's running down the street with her hair on fire and wanting to know, why did I take this job? It's, you know, I think it's an exciting concept. You know, I think the virtual school is gonna be around for a long time, and I just want it to be successful. And just from the time, from the one opportunity I've had to meet the principal, I was very impressed, and I would hate for her to get burned out. Because I don't think anybody anticipated two thousand students enrolling in the virtual school. I may be wrong, but I certainly didn't anticipate two thousand students. So, thank you.
I would say from our spring survey, we expected somewhere between six and eight hundred students. So we're more than double where we thought we were. A couple of other things. One of the issues, I mean, and this goes back to a little bit about what Mr. Breen brought up. We had to have a virtual option for our students this year based on the plan. We chose to go with a virtual school and try to stand that up. If we hadn't stood up a virtual school, we would have had to have a virtual option in the classroom, where our teachers would have been teaching both virtually and regularly. So I know there's some angst out there with our staff members, but the other option wasn't any more palatable for us. So just to think about all that.
Yes, Mr. Breen, moving forward.
Thank you. Dr. Newton, thank you for your presentation and also giving us some background in that for grace and understanding. So I had a couple of questions. One, definitely a lot of concerns that Mr. Breen just brought forward with, you know, going in and out early on and was, are we changing our rules for the nine weeks? And you've made very clear that's not gonna happen, and that's gonna be tightened up. And I understand why we would need to make those adjustments now, because I don't, I don't think parents realize, a lot of them that I've talked to, at the level of their involvement, that would need to be, what they would have to do for their students. So one of the things I, I understood we were gonna have twenty-five students per teacher. And I was curious as to, because I went back through the list on who went into virtual school, and we're gonna be approving that later on, so I was trying to do some math there. And I was looking at, how many subjects are the teachers teaching? And are we keeping in mind the equity between our teachers that are teaching in the classroom and the teachers that are teaching in virtual school? Where are we with that? And how does that work?
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, lots of good questions in there. Please, remind me if I forget any piece of them. The actual number for having a virtual section, based on their own recommendations and kind of the way other virtual schools operate, is actually thirty-five per section. And part of that, keep in mind, is that depending on the course, a lot of the teachers' assessments are done for them, where they don't have the same load for grading. They certainly don't have the same load in the planning and preparation side because the Edgenuity platform plans, prepares, puts together the lessons that the students work through. So I think, I think you have some caution in treating it as an apples-to-apples comparison to brick and mortar, because our brick and mortar teachers are having to do all the planning, preparation materials, and putting all those together, as well as whichever assessments are graded for them in virtual that brick and mortar certainly aren't. So I would caution that a little bit. The other thing is, we have stacked some classes in our brick and mortar historically, where we'll have multiple levels of a course. Sometimes we see it, a lot of times in art, a lot of times in some of our tech ed classes. But what we're seeing is the need to do more of that stacking in the virtual. And that is because we may not have a full sections worth of kids, say, taking the, a certain elective, and we need to bind that together with another course. But keep in mind, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're doing both of those things at the same time. The students will be working through their computer side of it, the teachers will be getting online with them periodically, but the teacher will not be on with the same kids at the same time, going back and forth. And so I would say that the amount of time is not excessive. Having to change gears is part of the flexibility that a virtual teacher will have to demonstrate in this environment. It's gonna depend largely, even within our virtual offerings, whether the course is very much canned in the sense that everything you need to know to be successful is buried within the course, versus some of them, and I think math would be a good example, where we're gonna have to depend heavily on the live instruction of a teacher. And so I think even within the virtual sections, it's not necessarily apples-to-apples to say how many are on your roster versus how many online. The other thing I would note is that in order to get the students able to start on the program, we had to declare a teacher for them. Well, we didn't have enough teachers in the beginning, as Mr. Weigel was trying to find them. So the teacher we had, we put every kid in that discipline with him. So we had some rosters that were forty and fifty deep, but it was just until somebody else could be hired, and then that placeholder name and the enrollment shifted away from it. So until some people were totally aware of that, I think they had some real concerns of the length of their roster.
Very good. Madam Chair, follow-up. Just a lived experience, and I love it when you say that, Dr. Newton, because so much of, you know, you're really good at trying to hear and resolve, work through, comfort, all of those things when you have that lived experience, when somebody brings you that lived experience. So I really appreciate your awareness on that, and also your proactive way of trying to resolve it. So when we started the virtual school, we had some students that were delayed in getting in, whether it was, you know, the technology issue, or just for multiple reasons like we talked about. But one of the things that was abundantly clear is that, I guess, in the system, and I actually did go through the system, I went online and went through Edgenuity and their website and looked at a lot of that, and it was fascinating. It shows that the students, like this particular student, talked to me and said, Mr. Breen, I was in tears, thirty-two assignments, I was behind the first, you know, I was all in the red, an absolute meltdown. And I know that there were several students in the same situation, when they couldn't get up and get going. So when they finally entered, two or three days later, they had multiple assignments that they were already behind in, they felt defeated. So I was kind of wondering, what are our communication from, two things, our communication out to those kids that come in, you know, that need that parent or that teacher's support to say, hey, don't forget, when you open up your deal, it's gonna look like this, but you're gonna be able to pace yourself through this, and it's all gonna be okay. So how is the district addressing that? And then also, how, what can parents expect? And have we stated anything to the parents about what, that interaction between that virtual teacher and that student, is that gonna happen face-to-face or Zoom once a week? Is it once a, you know, once a month? What is the, you know, what do we call it, the, what's the protocol? What are we gonna do? What are the rules for that? What can they expect?
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, I would say if any student is having that kind of meltdown, we want to know about it. We want to help them. This is not the time people should be thinking they're behind. When you see thirty-two assignments, my thought would be, many things that a teacher live with students is able to check in on to make sure they're making the kind of progress they need to be making, that has to be memorialized virtually through lots of checkpoints on the program. And so thirty-two assignments may be very different than saying like thirty-two essays to write, or thirty-two projects to complete. So I think there's maybe that piece. We're relying heavily upon our teachers. That's why we're, I mean, some places are just saying, here's the program, work your way through it. We have been blessed to be able to assign teachers to help them through that. So if a teacher hasn't expressed that very well, we would love to know so we can help coach the teacher to help coach the kids better. I think as far as the amount of contact time live, it's gonna depend on a few things. I believe our elementary are gonna be on much more than some of our secondary. I think, and keep in mind, our elementary teachers will be there all day, every day, available for a group of kids. Our secondary teachers are doing this as a piece of their day, and they can't get on with the kid two hours later because they'll be teaching live brick and mortar two hours later. So when that happens, it's gonna probably look a little different. It's going to look a little different depending on the course. We have some elective courses that the message has been this. For example, there's a very interesting elective to start kids on the path towards being a pharmaceutical tech. That's a pretty good opportunity for kids. But as you might imagine, we probably have zero people in this district who have a background as a pharmaceutical technician, and so their ability to provide live instruction, one, we don't have somebody dedicated to it, and two, we couldn't afford to pull somebody off for just a couple of kids to take it. But rather than say no to those kids, we said, here are the electives that are gonna have a lot more live teacher support. These electives, we're not gonna say no. But part of it is, you're not gonna have a lot of live teaching. You will certainly have a teacher of record who will check in with you and make sure you make a progress and work with you if you have any issues. In fact, myself and the coordinators are teacher, going to be teachers of record for more and more kids as we go, doing just that, not providing live instruction, but being that teacher resource that can check in with kids and see how they're doing, talk with their parents, and all of that. So I think depending on the course, it's gonna look very different. I think, hopefully, it will work the way the plan was drawn up. And if we need to reassess that because students are struggling beyond the healthy sort of struggle that schools should be, we will absolutely readdress it.
Okay. Ms. Hafner?
Thank you, Dr. Newton, for all that you've been doing with this. This is a monumental task. Can you talk a little bit about, there was blasted out that we were changing lunches, and that virtual school students could participate in something relating to lunches? Can you talk a little bit about that? Am I making sense?
Well, it's obvious I'm an expert in eating lunches. Planning for them is not my specialty, but maybe Mr. Bartlet?
That'll be our next topic.
Okay, okay, good, good, okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Mr. Bowen?
Madam Chair, thank you. I just have one question just came up when you answered another question there, and that is, are secondary students made aware of what time their teachers are available to help them?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Bowen, that is part of the, once the teachers get named, and as I said, most of them have been, part of the communication when they go live, which they should be doing during that assigned lot of time, is to be clear with the students when they are available for that. We could have a situation where the teacher for multiple classes is available at the same time, and on those, virtual school is working to find a different piece of time for the kids to be able to work with their teacher. That's gonna probably be some swapping out with some prep time from one place to another with the brick and mortar building.
Again, just a couple of comments. I'm glad to hear that you were very flexible in these first couple of weeks with the in-and-out of virtual school, because I've talked to several parents and students, and they were struggling with that decision about whether to go with the virtual or not. And so I'm sure we had a lot of people that made very late decisions on that, and so I think it's very helpful that we were flexible with that. My second comment is, you know, later on in the meeting, we're gonna be approving what I see as the longest list of hires for sophisticated staff that I've ever seen since I've been on board. I just want to say congratulations and thank you to all the staff who were involved in that very quick process of hiring that many teachers. So thank you for your work on that.
Mr. Breen?
Dr. Newton, just a final question. These other questions brought this up, and I'll be very quickly, quick with this. About twenty years ago, this district started with very extensive research and work towards teacher evaluation. I was part of the first group of teachers who was sent back to Cleveland to meet with Charlotte Danielson and do work with that, and then iterations of that have gone on. How are, I know you guys have a plan, because just very quickly tell me how you're gonna guarantee that teacher evaluation is equitable, because there's a big difference between you coming into my classroom, face-to-face students, as opposed to monitoring me with virtual. And I'm just curious how that's gonna work.
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, it's a very good point. Whenever I attempt to answer questions, I always try to ask myself, what have we done in the past that would be kind of a parallel? And I would say, I would argue, that different teachers, say, in a high school, their classroom is oriented so differently than some of their peers, that we try to apply the same model to very, very different professions. The teacher who is teaching welding and the teacher who is teaching AP calculus, what they do to do their job well looks very, very different and takes a level of mastery at both. And I would argue that maybe the virtual teachers are in a bit of the same boat, where what it looks like to do the planning and preparation, when some of it's already been done for them, is gonna look very different than a teacher in the brick and mortar who has to start out of whole cloth to make this happen. So my guess is, and I know I might be walking into Mr. Weigel's territory a little bit here, that once the staff is fully set, that the principal will get together with all of her teachers, once the emergencies have kind of leveled out. And after the urgent questions are being addressed, then we get to the important questions. And my guess is, that would include laying the Danielson model in front of them and saying, what would this look like tweaked for our particular situation? But some of them are gonna be point for point the same, communicating with families, environment of respect and rapport. Some of those very important Danielson theses are gonna be important in this environment, too.
Just very quickly.
Yes.
And this would be applying trustee Weider's question. You have one big administrator with your virtual school. She has 1,900 students, X number of teachers. Is that a workload that's capable that she can fairly evaluate them? Or will she have her, or other staff helping her with evaluation?
Madam Chair, Mr. Breen, it's a very good question. I would say that we have to remember that only certain people in this district are licensed to be evaluators, to provide an evaluation. So that makes it a little more difficult to get just any old person, even somebody who's near the process and understands what's happening in the building very well. We have to be careful that only certain people are certified to evaluate. I think time will tell. We're, I know a number of us are checking in with Lana more than once per day and will, will hopefully keep an eye on this to see what is reasonable. While I certainly don't want in any way to underestimate the work that a virtual principal is doing, there are some trade-offs, right? You don't have playground issues to resolve, you don't have lost backpacks to find. And so some of those things might be a trade-off. Is it a trade-off on balance that makes it doable, as you say? I think we'll find out more as we go along.
Thank you very much, Dr. Newton. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we do have the ability to ramp up there a little bit if we need to, in a couple of areas.
Ms. Rennie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just coming back to, what, how did it, I was trying to go back to my notes a couple of days ago. How does it shake out for honors classes in the virtual school? How about all the shakeout?
Madam Chair, Ms. Rennie, we are offering everything that Edgenuity has and that includes honors classes. There could be some frustration that a specific class in brick and mortar isn't offered in, in that school. But I think by and large, it's very, very comparable. As I said, today, we're working with a young lady in AP calculus. And so we have kids enrolled in AP, we have kids enrolled in honors. And any, anything other than that would just be a very specific course that just didn't line up exactly the same. But it very much has an honors track buried in it.
Very good. And one more follow-up and then I promise I'm done. And it might be Dr. Kenny that has to answer this, I'm not sure. But in going through the Edgenuity and going through their website and looking through everything, I was also looking at the virtual policy. So like, you know, we have board policy that we've all worked on for all these years. Do we need to look at the virtual policy and procedures? I know that it looks like there's some suggestions from Edgenuity, but will we be addressing that at a district level for our own specific needs or not?
So I would say that we are working within the policies that the state requires us to work through too. And if there are some policies that we believe that we need to address, we can do that through our policy process.
Thank you.
And I guess that, I could just ask one more question is that, is there enough flexibility, especially in the elementary grades, for a student, let's say a third grade student, to accelerate and maybe get into fourth grade level classes? As if there's no GT program per se, but can a student accelerate?
Madam Chair, absolutely. In fact, we already have some families that are fully intending to do that. And we have some kids at the, believe it or not, we have some kids in the elementary that are enrolled in high school courses, just because they were ready for them. It wasn't a matter of working ahead. So those are pretty rare. But it's not much different than some of our elementary kids who go up to junior high. And every now and then, I think we had a math student a few years ago who knew more math than I did by the time he was about 12. So we're absolutely willing to open up the next thing whenever they're ready for the next thing.
Great.
Madam Chair, next I would like to ask Mr. Bartlett to come up to the podium. He's going to talk about something that just happened last Monday. And so we are, as you know, you have to be flexible. And this will address Lynn's issue with lunch.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I will tell you, last Monday, we got word from the USDA that our summer feeding program could be extended through December 31st. And so it will function a little bit different than, than how we did the meal program this summer. But starting on Monday, we will begin serving breakfast and lunch and the entire district will be free. So all of our students, regardless of whether they-
Except for the virtual school, right?
Yes, brick and, brick and mortar students, thank you. We will serve free breakfast, free lunch for any student in, in any building. Couple caveats to that is the, the, if they've already got charges on the account, the parents will have to, to, they will still be responsible for that. But starting on Monday, we have prepared, we, we do fully expect that our lunch meals will increase at the secondaries and that breakfast may potentially increase at the elementary. So that's exciting. And then what I would tell you is on September 21st, we will open up a remote site serving out of the kitchen at the old Cary. And we will do that as it stands right now. We'll go Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So Monday they'll get two meals, two breakfasts, two breakfasts and two lunches. Wednesday, the same thing. And then on Friday, they'll get three, three days worth of meals. So we've done that for a couple of reasons. One is obviously with Cary, the layout there gives us a very, very clean place to bring them through. We can double stack because it'll be curbside feeding. We'll be able to utilize the kitchen that's there. And we're prepared for the, the high volume. That's where virtual people can go. And that's, so that's where the virtual students will be able to go and pick up their meals. And then we will just keep a close watch on that program as well to determine whether we, you know, we're at the right size or we need to expand. One of the reasons we chose Cary and that we didn't push out to the parking lots like we did this spring and summer is that when we get into November, December, we felt like our staff needed some shelter. So yes, by September 21st, we will be offering both programs in all of our schools. So that's, that's very exciting for all of our families.
Just, go ahead.
Ms. Rennie, stop going.
Well, you know, I just, I just hope the media picks up on this. You know, this is, to me, this is really exciting. This is the way you take care of your community. You know, and I know it's, it's, it's not school district funds that are funding this, but it doesn't make any difference. You know, the district is participating in it. I'm sure that we wouldn't have to if we didn't want to. But you know, the, the opportunity is out there and there are a lot of kids that are going to really benefit from this. So kudos to all of you for making this happen. And I think it's going to be really exciting for our community. So thank you.
I'm sorry, do you want to?
Oh, so I just want to clarify. So starting Monday, brick and mortar breakfast and lunch is free.
Yes.
Do parents have to do anything other than clear up their accounts?
No.
Do they need to do anything?
The one thing that we would ask them to do, and this is so that we can continue to get title funds, is that if they are, if they would qualify for free or reduced lunches, we still need them to apply for that because it drives a lot of other funding in our district, not just lunches. So we get federal funds for Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So we would really ask for anybody that believes that they would be free or reduced eligible to fill out the applications. And I believe they can do that online now.
Yes, they can.
So yeah, that's very important for us so we don't lose funding and we don't lose schools getting funded for, for some of those different titles.
Okay, so I think that that's important and hopefully principals will really work with families on that. So if you feel like you qualify, you still need to do that, even though your, your food is still going to be free. And then if you don't feel like you qualify, your food is still going to be free.
Correct.
Okay. And then the 21st is when the virtual will start.
The remote, remote feeding. And again, what I would tell you is anybody that is 18 or younger is eligible for that program. So daycare could drive through there and get their males, their meals as well.
How about homeschooling families? Would that be?
Any, anybody that is 18 or younger will qualify. So yes.
Thank you.
Anyone, oh, Ms. Rennie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I, two quick things. Maybe we could put that on the website, something quick to find for, a reminder for people to fill out that application because that's the only thing that I see is like, oh my gosh, if they don't, that's going to adversely affect us later on. So maybe that, you know, easy click to the website, reminding people to fill that out would be helpful. But I just wanted to thank our nutrition services and kind of going back to what they did this summer. What was the ending number?
We were just shy of a half million meals.
That's amazing. So all of you that put that together, our transportation, our nutrition services, all of our staff members that, you know, made that happen over the summer. And then the extra lift that we are going to be asking our schools and principals and teachers because they'll be eating in their classroom, correct?
There will be some situations where we will transition. Keep, keep in mind for breakfast, we've, we've asked them that that threshold is about 50 in the cafeteria and lunchrooms to be ready for their specials. So they are, they are gearing up to be, be prepared for that. And there will be some, you know, residual impacts. You know, we've already, where we, we used to have trash pickup every other day. We're expecting that to be every day. So you'll, you'll have some increases and some doable things. But I think our staff and our folks are ready for it.
Well, I just really appreciate that. And I think the whole board feels that the same way. So thank you very much.
Ms. Howard.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because I did have some people contact me about this. I know there's going to be glitches and people just need to hang on. Some people were upset that food ran out. But I'm sure that that's just kind of probably us figuring out the volume.
Yes.
And can you talk a little bit, is there seconds? Can students get seconds?
There will not be seconds. And there will be no à la carte with this. So they will get the meals that, that are prepared. One of the benefits we will have with this though, in, in the summer, everything we did was shelf-stable, prepackaged. And of course, we order our commodities a year in advance. And, and so with us being closed from March on, we've got a lot of food. And so we do expect to be able to serve hot meals with this program.
And I guess I would like to add to Ms. Rennie's comments. And I'm sure expressing the whole board is so grateful for the work during the summer and continuing work. It's, it's, it's great support for the whole community.
And, and again, we will make sure that, obviously this will go, program will run through Christmas break. And then we will make sure that we advertise heavily. When they come back after Christmas, that the program will sunset. And obviously, there's the potential that the USDA may extend this. And if they do, then we will pick up where we left off. So we have done a couple of, Mary Claus Community Relations has done a couple of media blasts. And I know that each individual school is going to begin, I think, starting today, getting the word out to their families as well through Robine.
And it's also on, under the featured items, universal meals as well.
Is the application there for them?
The application is, is out there on the nutrition's page. And again, we, we have really emphasized to principals that it is imperative that we get those forms filled out and we keep that data, data coming in.
Mr. Weider's bond, who had your-
Yeah, so just to be clear, right now, currently, the end date is December 31st, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Rennie, can I?
Oh, this one, if we were, of course, we're not going to, because we're going to get it. But shutting down or if you had to close a school or what's the backup plan to still provide lunches? Or how would that, what would that look like if we ended up closing?
If we had to close a school, we could easily go into the same remote feeding that we did this, this past summer. And with the, the USDA waivers, you know, typically when you serve summer feeding program, it's got to be in a neighborhood that has a high poverty density. And those guidelines or restrictions were waived. So we, we should be able to reach out and do multiple sites as we did over the summer.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I don't know if you're planning on coming back for another item, this part of, there's two things that are going to come up later on that I wanted to ask about. First of all, I want to say, pleas to your staff for putting the extra parking room at East High School forward over with the partnership with the church. And I'm assuming you're probably paying and something for that. But it seems to be utilized. When I first saw them putting it up there, I thought, those students aren't going to walk that far to get over to school. But it's, it seems to be more and more in there every day. So I think that was a good solution to the parking problem created by the pool construction. And the second thing is, later on, we're going to be approving a memorandum of understanding to let the city use the facility that we just purchased for gymnastics. And I didn't see that there were, are we going to be charging them any rent for that? Obviously, we're going to have some expenses involved in running that building for them.
So with, with the MOU, they will cover their custodial expenses. And, and the agreement was set up as kind of an in-kind trade as we will be using the, the softball facilities in the spring. So they have the opportunity to use that rent-free for six months, renewable one time. If it were to extend beyond that, then we would negotiate a set fee.
So we will be paying utilities on that then?
Yes. And we will be moving some district programs in there as well.
And one, because we talked about the fields over there. Is there going to be any lighting available in those fields? Are we just going to try to do everything to engage that?
Right now, the plan is daytime hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all for now, Mr. Bartlett. Stay, stay prepared for the-
Well, he'll be back two more times. So don't worry about that. I am, ask John just to speak briefly about kind of restabbing the district a couple of different times since August 1st. So you, you got that long list. I thought we probably should give you a little information on it. So, Mr. Weigl.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Dr. Brown's board members. I'm going to share some general fund staffing information with all of you related to the changes in daily shifting of student enrollment numbers throughout the district. These staffing decisions started in August, August 12th exactly, and have continued into this work week. I'll pause after each section and answer questions or provide additional information if you need it. On August 12th, there was a collaborative meeting with elementary triad chairs and cabinet members to review current enrollment numbers and sections throughout the district listed in Infinite Campus. This group came to a consensus on the collaption or collapsing, collapsing open sections, opening vacant positions and adding sections where needed. An additional 283 students from the elementary grades registered after this initial staffing. So we had to make a couple more changes, as you can see. The following staffing information is the result of changes in student numbers across the district. This is just in the elementary level. So 11 vacant positions were collapsed within the district elementary schools because of low student numbers. Those are brick and mortar schools. 10 out of 30 Shine Virtual School transfer positions had to be replaced back in brick and mortar buildings. An example would be Freedom Elementary had a kindergarten teacher transferred to Shine Virtual School. And that position had to be replaced because the school had 62 kindergarten students and they would need four sections instead of three. So even though we transferred some folks out, there were still a need in the brick and mortar schools. 20 out of 30 Shine Virtual School transfers were not replaced back into the district. An example of that would be Melrock Elementary School. We transferred one fifth grade teacher to the virtual school. We also transferred one sixth grade teacher to the virtual school. But those, those sections didn't need to be replaced. That kind of gives you an idea of some of the shifting we had across the district. These decisions were made because of student needs and section numbers. We did have one elementary teacher was forced transferred because of low numbers at our elementary school and high numbers within first grade class at Freedom Elementary School. Is there any questions about how that kind of shifted? If you remember, we held a lot of positions because we knew we were going to have to shift a lot of our staff. And part of the, part of the, I guess, formula, remember, we had 40 teachers with some medical compromise issues. We also had to fit into some of these transfers. Okay? Yeah?
Oh, yes, Ms. Bowen.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a comment that I don't think we anticipated this back when we approved the five-six schools. But it sounds like that was actually easier to get staff reallocated using a five-six school because it is a larger school and you kind of convince some of these things within there. So another advantage of having the five-six.
Exactly. That was a nice number. You know, around 20 students transferred out. We could collapse one, perfect. It all didn't work out that easily, but that was a good example of where it did. Okay, so resignations from the spring, which were put on hold and transfers to Shine Virtual School resulted in the following staffing decision. These are by triad. So Central Triad had 11 positions open, three being collapsed, three new hires and one additional, I'm sorry, eight new hires and one additional new teacher position was at Prairie Window Elementary School. Their sixth grade class, I think, started out with 27, 28, 28. And they have three sections. So that was a new section that was added at Prairie Wind. East Triad had eight positions open with four positions being collapsed with four new hires. South Triad, this is still elementary, had five positions open with four positions being collapsed and one new hire. So 29 grade level positions and 2.5 positions for a total of 30 K sixth grade transfers took place for Shine Virtual School. place for Shine Virtual School. Nine certified specialists from special education, ESL, instructional coach, counselor, social worker, music, RP were also transferred to Shine Virtual School. Any questions about any of those numbers? Sorry, I'm trying to do something like glasses. I'm trying to not fog them up here.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is there any way, just so that we could look, is there a way we could get a list of everybody in the virtual school? Because we're talking about this person in the special coach and this person. It'd be nice to have a list who's there. Can we ever get that?
Yeah, it may take us a couple days to, but other things that are more important, but we'll get it to you as soon as we can get it compiled.
Thank you.
So that's kind of all the, if you have any other questions, that's pretty much all gone.
And I'm not exactly sure. Maybe this falls into one of the others. So like with your specialists and with the virtual school, are they teaching, are they teaching PE for the, for one semester out of, for the entire year or one semester? Or how is it, how did they, or is it similar to the brick-and-mortar?
No, I think it is different. I think they're going by grade bands, and I think it is by nine weeks or section, different grades by nine weeks. So it is quite a bit different. I don't know if Dr. Newton has that information. I wasn't on the instructional side of that. But I do know that was the need that Lana, the principal, talked to me about is, hey, I need one PE teacher, I need one health teacher, I need one music teacher for this, for the elementary groups. But it is segmented throughout the year. It's not like they're going to be able to work with all those kids at one time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in terms of 7 through 12, so we're, just as a reminder, we use the annex staff for the seventh-grade core. We have 148 students, and that's a total of five staff members. Those staff members are at annex, there are four core teachers plus a PE teacher. I'm not sure from year to year if we had a lot of students that might have been suspended out of school, that might have been started there, but they didn't have a lot of students to start out with, so we wanted to utilize them as a staff. I believe they started with five students. So they're going to be kind of our seventh-grade core to start out with. Eighth-grade students, there was 178 students, and we actually use 1/6 contracts from about 15 staff members throughout the district to try to meet those needs. Those are extra contracts that they would put on top of their normal teaching contracts. And we use CARES Act funds to fund those extra 1/6, and that's for the eighth-grade core. So that would be the eighth-grade group from all over the middle schools. High schools are sharing sections to meet the 600, I think it's 647 high school students enrolled in Shine Virtual School. We did transfer one full-time counselor to the Shine Virtual School to assist with secondary scheduling. The district's working on 7 through 12 grade sections and teachers because of registration, class changes, and increase enrollment within the secondary grades at Shine Virtual School. We probably are going to be using some other 1/6 contracts for additional teachers to fill those needs. This is kind of an eye-opener, I hope. So a total of 75 full-time certified positions were hired, transferred, or collapsed to meet the changing staffing needs of the district to start the 2020 school year. The most challenging secondary issue within the process surrounded class registration numbers, which changed tremendously from spring registration to new classes offered within Shine Virtual School. Just to add a little context of that, so we staff based on spring preregistration numbers and knowing what content, what teachers, and what areas were needed. We have that staff across the difference complete. When we went to the Shine Virtual School, some of those courses weren't offered, some of the courses were new. So that really made staffing difficult because they weren't apples to apples. And that's the stuff that we're currently working on that Dr. Newton talked about. We're trying to see what do those new classes look like? What are the sections going to be? Who needs to be able to teach those classes? And we're going to hopefully finish that up in the next couple of days.
Complicated. Yes, Ms. Renee.
Yeah, with all of that being so complicated, how did the required training work for those teachers that, you know, were moved into the virtual school? Are we where we need to be on that now? Or are we still playing some catch-up?
So I think as teachers are added, we're giving them, I think, five hours of comp time to go through the ingenuity orientation. Teachers are identified before school started. They have more time to get in and actually view some of those videos and the orientation for ingenuity. If we transfer a person today, we would say, or, you know, out of 1/6, we would give them an additional five hours to orient themselves to the actual sections.
Okay, Mr. Bowen.
How are we doing the substitute? Because we're probably going to meet substitutes to the virtual schools or all of the regular schools. Do we have enough at this point?
Yeah, we've identified a couple substitutes that are going through ingenuity training themselves. We do have a couple of long-term subs that are needed right out of the chute because some of the medical issues we're dealing with with staff. So we have identified substitutes that will step in. I believe it was a one day they might not need to have a substitute. It's more than one day. They will have a substitute fill in and work through ingenuity and do the same types of things the regular teacher would be doing with our students.
And this is probably not your area, but do you know how many students we have in the secondary buildings who are coming to our brick-and-mortar buildings for like one section of elective?
I don't know that number, but I think it's lower than we anticipated. At first, I think we thought there'd be more core classes, and they'd want to take electives at their brick-and-mortar schools. I think a lot of the students are fully virtual, and that's causing some of our problems with some electives we're trying to fill with teachers.
Yes, Mr. Weider's bond. I'm sorry, do you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question. I want to go back to what Mr. Breen was talking about earlier with regard to teacher evaluations for virtual school. So I'm, now, if I'll park figure, let's say there are 57 teachers in the virtual school. If we have 2,000 students, and if we anticipate sections of 35, we're going to, would it be fair to say we're going to have, that principal's going to be responsible for evaluating approximately 57 teachers?
I think there's going to be a little less than that because a lot of the secondary teachers only teach one class virtually, so they will be evaluated face-to-face at their home school for high school. In terms of the junior highs, that's very similar because a lot of those teachers only have one section virtual, and the other sections, they would be at their regular junior high school. The annex staff does have an administrator that will help supervise them with our suspended students, and they'll coordinate, I think, with our virtual school principal. So the majority of full-time teachers are at the elementary level.
If I could, just follow up, Madam Chair. So I think it would be fair to say, and I hope you would agree with me, that the virtual environment is unique, as opposed to a brick-and-mortar classroom where the principal goes in and does an evaluation. And so do you anticipate any unique challenges with regard to the principal evaluating virtual teachers as opposed to teachers that are in a brick-and-mortar classroom? And coming back to the issue of equity, so if I'm a teacher in a brick-and-mortar school and I have a friend who's teaching virtually, do you anticipate any unique challenges evaluating teachers in the virtual environment as opposed to in a classroom instructional environment?
I think it will be challenging. When I talked to Lana about some of the teachers and what we're looking for in terms of traits, we talked about a great teacher face-to-face is a great teacher virtually. So I think she can highlight some of those skills and abilities. The other part that I'm not sure if Dr. Newton mentioned was, we have that CAM program, but you can supplement that. And some of the teachers that we hired did a lot of work in Canvas and have a lot of really good ideas. They're going to supplement that curriculum. They're going to add to that as students need that. So I don't see the majority of our elementary teachers sitting back and not supplementing and developing additional lessons to support student learning. I see we're going to get a lot of that as we move forward after we get used to ingenuity.
I think, Mr. Weider's bond, one of the nice things is Lana was a principal of a virtual school for, I think, 11 or 12 years.
Actually, five years, only five.
Five years.
Oh, well, I was giving her a couple of them, but she's had some experience there. She talked, when we interviewed her, about how she would sit down with her staff to start out with and talk about how the evaluation process was going. She's familiar with Charlotte Danielson as well. So I think we're going to be in better shape than we thought we might be there. But again, I do agree that it is a little bit different whenever you're working through the virtual environment. I think there are walkthroughs that you can do. You just talk to your teachers about being able to, being invited into their classroom whenever they're teaching with their kids and everything as well. Could I just follow up, Madam Chair? Just, you know, and I think, I understand that this is a work in progress, and we're learning as we go on. And I don't anticipate that we're going to have all of the answers to these questions upfront. I understand that that's not reasonable, and we're learning in this whole process. I just want to come back to the fact that I, as one board member, I want this to be successful. And I think these are issues that we need to talk about because they're so important. One of the most important things a building principal does, or a principal does, virtual principal or building principal, is to evaluate staff. It's an awesome responsibility if it's done correctly. Many times, I've seen where it's not done correctly. And, you know, teachers get discouraged when they don't feel like the principal is evaluating them fairly. And I know that you all work real hard to make sure that that happens. But I think it's really important that we look at these issues carefully and make sure that that virtual principal, who now has, you know, 50-some teachers, that she's probably going to be responsible for evaluating at some point, has the necessary support that she needs to do that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Renee, go ahead, then, Mr. Bowen.
Okay, thank you. I just, on the evaluations part, I didn't think about this earlier. So thank you, Mr. Weider's bond. Would, is there an opportunity in the ingenuity to have parents, student, and staff on feedback for our virtual school? Will we be looking at that? Or is there something built into it?
Madam Chair, Ms. Renee, I'm not sure that's a built-in piece on the ingenuity side, but we can always build our own feedback mechanism to get that kind of input.
Probably be helpful. Thank you.
And Mr. Bowen.
Okay, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, were there any teachers that were forced to go over to the virtual, or was it all volunteer?
I don't believe there were any forced teachers. The majority had some kind of health-related issue. As we gained students, we tried to match up. If they were a sixth-grade teacher, we wanted to be an upper-level virtual school teacher. So every day, we looked at the numbers as they shifted. As they warranted a new section, I would look at our list of teachers and just kind of make that match, call them, and talk to their principal and say, there's an opportunity for them to go virtual. Do you support that move? The principal would say, yeah, they would be great. They were one of our leaders last year. Then I would call the teacher and say, we're going to offer this position or this transfer to you if you want to take it. So we did not transfer anybody into the virtual school that didn't want to go.
So I think that's going to be very helpful along with that. Teachers don't want to be there, so.
Yes, Mr. Breen.
Yeah, Mr. Weigle, just very quickly, what percentage of the 912 virtual school teachers are 1/6, are doing an additional 6?
What percentage are? So we don't have a full-time in the secondary. They're all 1/6 based on the needs. So if you look at the number from the high school, the majority of those students are going to need English, math, science, and social studies, and then we're trying to match those up. So we don't have anybody at the high school level with more than 1/6. They're all teaching full-time, or they've actually substituted like one section from their normal teaching, and they're doing virtual, or they're teaching three out of four, and they're also doing one additional for the 1/6.
Follow up, Madam Chair. Then here's the question that's been hit over again this evening. There's an equity issue then in terms of preparation, that on one hand, I'm preparing full-time for my, or at least 4/6 or 5/6 for my face-to-face kids. And now I jump over, and as you mentioned, the ingenuity has a canned lesson plan. But to me, if I already have two different preps and I add the virtual one, that's a pretty big load. And also, it brings in two different administrative evaluators, one in my building and one at the virtual school. Where do we have the conversations? Trustee Weider's bond said, I think we have a challenge there, too.
Yeah. I think the secondary teachers were asked who wanted to take this opportunity on. They weren't forced to do that. And then the 1/6, same thing. We had openings in those core areas. We reached out and asked anybody interested in doing the 1/6 to reach out to the principal. She did a short little screening, and that's how she decided who would move forward with those 1/6. So even those weren't forced, and some of those were teachers with some health issues that even one extra class away from students face-to-face was beneficial to them.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all for now.
All right. Thank you. Next, I think on your list is preliminary enrollment numbers. And again, I would tell you, these are very preliminary, being the second week of school. So I'll ask Dr. Kenny to come up and share preliminary enrollment numbers with you.
Madam Chair, trustees, I have two slides, and thank you for prefacing that background with very, very preliminary. We standardly take a snapshot of district enrollment on October, right around October 10th of each year. And so these comparisons that I'm providing tonight are compared to that October snapshot of prior years. So this first slide, I've thrown up eight years of historical enrollment data from 2012, 13 up through last fall, which we've recognized every year at least a 1% increase in enrollment. Those of you who have served on the board for several, for few terms have seen that. This fall, just as of last Friday and today, or excuse me, yesterday, the enrollment for 2020, '21 school year currently stands at 13,924 students, which is down 382 students from the October 10 snapshot last year. So I just want to alert you to that. There may be some discrepancies and a couple of numbers just within my slides here that I know as of today, even we had 24 students in transition, some of those transitions we were talking about earlier. Let's see, I'll go to the next slide here. Dr. Brown, can you move that to the next slide for me?
You bet.
Here, I've provided some more graphs to give you an idea of some fluctuations in that a question was asked about our homeschool enrollments and if those have went up significantly due to COVID. Actually, I'm not seeing any real striking jumps in homeschool enrollment overall. As you can see, I've started with 2012, 13 up through 2019, '20. Some, you know, pulled from the brick-and-mortar schools in the district last year to homeschool options. And we currently are recognizing 385 students enrolled in our homeschool options there. That date should actually read probably last Friday, the 4th of September, that we've been monitoring that. The only thing I think that is somewhat concerning to me maybe is that out of those 385 students, you'll see the note at the bottom, that 121 of those students were students from our brick-and-mortar schools. Okay? Now, this is the first year that we've really tallied students from our brick-and-mortar schools who have transferred into a homeschool program. So I'm just watching that very closely. At the bottom left-hand corner will be some of the, just showing you from the last two years, our enrollment counts from 2017, '18, '18, '19, just kind of show you that really it is consistent with the growing enrollment in our district, okay? That we've always ended up around somewhere between 2 and, right around 3% of whatever our district enrollment is. We would expect students also to be enrolled in homeschool.
Dr. Kenny, your numbers, are all those numbers, start-of-the-school-year numbers?
Yes.
So all of the homeschool numbers are start-of-the-school or are they end-of-the-school-year numbers?
Start-of-the-school-year numbers, I tried to compare them.
Okay.
Yeah, around the similar dates and so forth.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, just one quick question. Dr. Kenny, what, do we have data that indicates whether or not homeschool students are typically enrolled in the homeschool environment for multiple years? Or do they typically enroll in the homeschool for one year, do that for a while, and then the next year, they'll enroll in the brick-and-mortar school? So are these students typically long-term homeschoolers? Or how does that, do we have data that's?
I would say typically, at the elementary levels, they will be longstanding homeschool students. We have We afford elective options for elementary students, all the way through K-12, actually. But if they transfer back to the public school system, it's usually around junior high or high school.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Dr. Kenny, Dr. Kenny, can, can the homeschool students also participate in the virtual school remote? And if so, does that, do we get to count those back in our classroom?
Actually, we have reached, when students haven't, or excuse me, families have inquired about homeschooling their students, we have provided them this option, and many of them did seek the virtual school option. So, yes, they can, doubt them classified as public school student, however.
So, it's possible for them to do both? They could do homeschool for some and then virtual school for some other part of education?
They could take electives via the virtual school option, similarly to what we do with the homeschool students to the public school. Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Well, it kind of looks like the numbers don't add up to what we would have looked like we would have had at the end of last year. So, what are we doing to reach out to the parents that may have made a choice to homeschool their students, but maybe they don't know that they're supposed to tell us about their curriculum? So, are we reaching out to parents kind of in general, want to know that they need to register their curriculum with us?
Yes, whenever there was inquiry for homeschool and concern, especially because due to COVID, we, you know, offered then, you know, shine virtual school, told them where to go once we got it stood up. Some of those started in the spring, and we backtracked and called those families.
So, everybody that didn't show up has been accounted for as well? You've tried to account for it?
Yeah, we tried to track down. Absolutely, yes.
And Dr. Kenny, just to clarify, do we approve a homeschool curriculum? What is our role in keeping track of these numbers?
We do not approve a homeschool curriculum. However, we do recognize to make sure that educational services are being extended to these students. And so, if you recall, the motion that is provided to the trustees and voted on is to recognize homeschool curriculum.
Oh, and maybe you said it, maybe I missed it. So, you talk about 121 enrolled homeschool students were from our brick-and-mortar.
Yes.
Do you have numbers where homeschool families in the past moved to either back to brick-and-mortar or virtual? Do you have any of those numbers?
I don't. We could trace those back. I would probably be able to readily find homeschool to shine virtual because it's very recent. But we haven't tracked those in the past.
It would be interesting. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if adding virtual, some of those families felt like they wanted to come back to that. It'd be interesting.
Sure.
Mr. Green, do you?
Madam Chair, what I was going to mention was that the question you raised with Dr. Kenny about a homeschool curriculum, we went through those troubles over 20 years ago. Wyoming does not have that. And as a parent, all you need to do is copy the table of contents of a textbook and present that. We have no other choice. So, there is no, in the state of Wyoming, approved homeschool curriculum. We have to take what they present as long as it looks like there is a curriculum there.
Right. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd ask Dave and Tom to come up and talk a little bit about our activities plan that we've had to put together for COVID. And I know that they've spent quite a bit of time with our activities directors and principals, making sure that we're within the guidelines of the state orders.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, I will tell you that, and I think you saw it when Mary was up, the plan is online. And we worked with the three high school A.D.s. And I know they were involved in a lot of committee work over the summer with the WHSA to pull this plan together. And then, and then Tom kind of pulled that all together to put out there. It's a very fluid document. I would tell you that we have, we have already, from the first day we posted it, we've had to do some amending and some changes, just with some numbers, with, with our spectator numbers and those types of things. And we will continue to adjust it based on our current conditions and on any updates the governor's orders may have. We're prepared to make those shifts as well. So, we really focused hard on the fall sports. I know that Tom's actually on some committees, looking at winter sports and, you know, what may come to be there as well. But I think what I'll do is turn the podium over to Mr. Siemens and let him just kind of hit the high points. And then we figured we would just answer any questions you may have.
And with that, I would like to introduce our new activities director for the district, Mr. Tom Siemens. I want to remind you guys that we did collapse positions last year to be able to hire an activities director or, so it wasn't new money or we didn't steal money from somewhere else. We did collapse some administrative positions to be able to do that.
Dr. Brown, did I see that you have a document where you could?
I can put it up there. Yes, I can.
I thank you for inviting me tonight, or I guess I wasn't really invited, but I needed to meet the board. I'm very impressed with all the questions that you're asking. I suppose you'll have a few questions on this plan. So, if we could just go to the table of contents, I think we can speed some things up. I would tell you that when we were writing this plan, and I'm certainly not going to take credit because much of it was started before I got on board. But we shared, and other districts shared with us, we'd like most districts to have the same protocol. And so, we're pretty close with most of the districts in the state. We talked with the WHSA, the NFHS, and obviously county health and a whole bunch of groups. And we pay attention to the governor's orders. And if you look through here, pretty much anything, I think the table of contents the easiest place to go, if you've got a child across country, or football, or spirit. Those are the easiest places to go. And then if we scroll down to the appendix, we have a few charts and, oops.
How far is the appendix, Tom?
Just, I mean, just, I just mean in the table of contents. Sorry about that. So, we have a number of appendixes and appendices. I don't know how to say that plurally, but some of these have come into play already. We have protocols on what happens when a student is on a trip, and all of a sudden they get sick. And we have different protocols. Number one protocol on that is call the parent and see if we can get him picked up. And we've actually had that happen. To this point, we have not had any positive cases from athletics. I'm sure I would have heard of that by now. But we have had a few kids sick, and we have protocols. If the parents can't bring them home, how we would try to get them home safely and keep them separate from the rest of the kids, whether it's more space on the bus, or we might have a multipurpose vehicle there and have a coach bring them home. But we have protocols on if we have a positive case. And the best place to go is just table of contents. And I guess, one of the things that we have changed the most would just be spectator policies. And what we have tried to do, and I don't know that every district agreed with this, but we felt like the most important people that needed to get into our stadiums and into our gyms would be the parents. And that's the first thing we tried to do, is get parents in. And after that, and by the way, a lot of parents, because it's football, we've got to not only have football parents, but we have band parents, and we have cheer parents. And we tried to get as many as we could and still stay within the guidelines of the governor. So, if you would like to just kind of look through that list, and if you have some questions on any of the protocols, we'd be happy to share what we're doing. Or if you've just had a burning question since we started, started a school year and started a sporting year, which was a couple of weeks, or three weeks before school started, would be happy to answer those as well.
Yes, Ms. Harris. Mr. Bartlett, I'm going to ask the question that I get asked all the time. When are we going to let club swimming back in?
Well, I think Mr. Bartlett has more information to share with you on that. So, if Mr. Bartlett, if Mr. Bartlett hasn't been kicked enough, he just got a new issue last Thursday or Friday.
So, what I would say, we actually have a meeting with the club coaches later this week. But we will, we will sit down and actually the sham cutthroats, which is one of the clubs, has submitted an admission plan that we will make sure matches our current protocols. I have had the, the high school A.D.s have pulled their calendar together to make sure, obviously, we have east out of a pool, and there's swimming time at both south and central. And then the second thing we've done is we've made sure that we have at least an hour open swim for our high school male swimmers. And so, once that's all lined out, then we will be able to reach out to the clubs and dial them in. What Boyd was alluding to is we did find out last week that we do have an issue with the boiler at the South High Swimming Pool. And so, we've, we've got some emergency repairs in line. We have a new boiler on its way. That's going to be about a $37,000 repair, which under our old procurement guidelines, I would have had to issue a kind of an emergency approval to get that done. And then we would brought it in front of the board over the summer because we've, those procurement limits that have been elevated to 50,000, we were able to just exercise and get that done. So, right now, we're limping along with the South High Pool. If that boiler goes down, we won't be able to maintain proper water temperatures. And so, in that case, all three high schools will have to use Central's pool until I get the repairs done, which it looks like we should be able to have taken care of in about 10 days. So, we're fingers across. We've got it patched together. But I want to make sure that our three high schools are taken care of before we give open access to the clubs. But I do anticipate that our clubs will most likely be able to access the pools by September 15th.
Madam Chair? Yes, Mr. Green?
Mr. Bartlett, will we be requesting the sponsors of the club groups to check kids' temperatures, et cetera, et cetera? Will there be a safety, health safety protocol that's expected of them? And what will be the monitoring device to make certain they adhere to it?
We will. Well, I would tell you, first of all, two of our club sponsors are actually our high school swim coaches. So, I think we've got a pretty good degree of oversight there. But we will expect, and we have done this with even City Parks and Rec, where they've requested access, is that they are following the same protocols we are. Because the way we see it is that those, those students who are participating are also our students. So, tomorrow, they're going to show up at our school. So, we want to make sure that they are, they've got the same level of safety and the same processes in place.
Madam Chair, a quick follow-up. We're within just six, eight weeks from city league, adult basketball, and volleyball. Will the city be accessing our gyms for that? And then what will our protocol be for that?
As it stands right now, close-contact sports are not permitted under the governor's health there. So, five-on-five basketball will not be, be able to be offered unless the orders change. So, that we'll have to wait and see. But we will expect, again, them to meet the same capacity numbers, the same screening guidelines, same criteria that we have for our school. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Ms. Harris, over here. Thank you, Dave, for your report and working with the swim clubs. They will be very happy, very happy. I have a question. Could you track and give us any numbers on the number of people accessing live streaming? Is there a way to capture how many people log on to, say, a football game?
At this stage, I think we could find out from the NFHS network how many people are able to access it. I know we don't have as many accessing it as we want right now because we're not completely up and running at all sites.
So, what I would tell you is, as we ordered kind of kits, if you will, to livestream at the junior highs, I think there are probably several school districts across country doing the same thing. So, we've, we've had an issue getting all of the equipment in. But I believe by Tuesday morning, we will have six of those kits. So, we'll have one at each junior highs, and then one at each of the high school auxiliary gyms. And so, shortly thereafter, I think we will have two kits per school, and we'll be able to ramp up even the junior high streaming. But we will see what we can do to figure out whether or not we can, we can get those numbers for you. I will tell you, this past Friday night, when we did varsity football, you know, we reached out to both local radio stations and asked them to do, allow their broadcast to livestream in behind. Couple of glitches there, but I think that was well received. And I think the public appreciated kind of the play-by-play, not the silence. So, we'll continue to work through that and create a better product for the public.
Yes, Ms. Green?
I just want to follow up with Mr. Bartlett on that. So, the live streaming and the equipment that we're talking about is, was all paid through rec. No, we didn't use any general funds.
That is correct.
Dollars for that. So, and then my next question on, and I gosh, so many times through all of, that we've asked our teachers and our staff members to do, our custodial staff, the additional lift for, whether it's the swimming program after school or any other programs, what, one, I want to thank them and recognize the extra additional lift that they're all doing as well. But what, what consideration or what, how does that work for when we bring outside entities into the building and our custodial staff follows up behind them? Because they don't bring their own custodial staff to clean up after them. We're still using the district.
That's correct. So, in, in the event that we are able to build a custodial schedule to revolve and work around the event, then we do not charge additional work. We're able to cover it. So, you know, we can schedule classroom cleaning and then come back. And typically, the gyms and the pools will be something that we can do last. With the additional lift of what we're having to do, the extra sanitizing and the extra cleaning, if we did incur additional costs, then by policy, we would push those back to the club to cover. And right now, I think we're staying ahead. But obviously, as we allow, you know, we've limited access to just a few, few groups. But if we expand that, then that may be something we would have to consider.
Thank you. Mr. Ball?
So, since you now have two weekends of sports activities, how many people have we had to turn away at the gates because they didn't get the word that you had a ticket to get in?
I, yeah, Mr. Ball, I would say very few. I think that both the school level for us and, you know, for the visiting folks, we've done a good job communicating out. We've really emphasized to the A.D.s that, that, you know, we've reached out to, for instance, if we went to Thunder Basin, we would reach out to them, give what that process is and make sure our parents are aware. And I know we've reached out, for instance, last week, you know, in Truma County, came Cheyenne. We made sure that they were aware. So, I think that for A in general, because as Tom said, we've tried to stay fairly consistent. I think parents are aware. And, you know, again, we've, you know, I've been on the radio. We've talked to newspaper, and we've pushed remains out to make sure that the general public were aware that we've limited it. We have actually, though, encouraged them, you know, the sub-varsity, because that thousand on outdoor venues is, you know, rather large. We've said, you know, there's some varsity. If you want to watch a football game, you can probably get to our sites and be able to do that because we're just doing click counts. With the junior highs, it's a little tricky because, of course, Johnson and, you know, Johnson's site is, I mean, maxed out at 250 pretty quick. So, it's, it's two spectators per suited player, both visitor and home. McCormick, we're playing all of their games right now risky. So, you know, spectatorship's not, not an issue. And, you know, with Kerry, we are, of course, we want to have bleachers installed over there. So, they're bringing chairs, and I think they're extremely quick counts there.
Yeah, I would add, we're also utilizing story gym for McCormick and other schools as well.
When you gave your report last time about our livestream, that you were going to possibly have students doing the play-by-play for the things that are not on the radio? How's that come about?
So, and I would tell you, we started east, east time. And Mr. Marinch and Mrs. Brants are actually putting together kind of a, it's an A.D. camp that they're going to do with, with their students. Once our equipment gets here, then we plan on taking that ten-foot and sharing it with south and central as well. So, we kind of need the equipment here to show them how to set it up and figure out how to work around it. But that, that is in process.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
As you know, I told you, you'd get to see Dave a couple of different times. We've had some questions about the changes in transportation and what all has happened. We've had some questions about the, the changes in transportation and what all has happened there. So, I asked Dave to get with our transportation department and, and work through to, to give you guys a report on that. So, we, we happen to have Justin Budd, who worked with the Wyoming Department of Ed and also works with us. And then we've got Adam, who is out at our, our spa. So, I'd ask those guys to come up and then we'll give you a little bit of an update on how that works. And Dave, I'll let you kind of take over from there.
So, I, I would tell you, Adam and Justin drew straws on, as you can tell, Justin's coming up here who drew straws. So, you know, we're fortunate with, with the, the folks that we have out of transportation. We've just got such a, a depth of experience. You know, Adam coming from Albuquerque Public Schools and, and Justin overseeing the W D E's portion of this when the Chapter 20 rules were, were written. But I, I wanted to have Justin come up and just kind of share with you the background of the rules, what latitude we have, what decisions we can make. Adam and Justin stood up the Transportation Advisory Committee, which I know Mr. Green sits on. And what we tried to do when we, we knew these Chapter 20 rules were, were coming forward, I know, first of all, I, I want you to understand that we actually lobbied against these changes pretty hard all the way through. But once, once they were pushed through, you know, we're obligated to, to hold them up and move forward with them. But what we tried to do was create an instrument that removed the, the emotion and that would look at all of Cheyenne similarly, no matter what, what, you know, what part of town you were from, what triad, the age group, so that we could just make some very data-driven decisions. And I think that's what, what Adam and Justin have done. With the Chapter 20 rules, obviously, are, are, it used to be called no walk zones. They're now called transportation. No transportation zones. Those have been increased. And then I know that you, you all have, have had numerous emails from folks in the community talking about that the school board may take official action to, you know, offer transportation in a no transportation zone. But I think one point that's typically been left out of those emails to you is there is specific language that talks about examples. It says, "Examples of bypassing the no transportation zone would be things such as rivers, railroad tracks, multi-lane roads with inadequate pedestrian crossings, or lack of adequate walkways or pathways." So, that, that was a real key cornerstone to what we did when we created that rule break. So, I'm going to turn the podium over to, to Justin and let him, again, give you some background and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity this evening to provide some information regarding the Wyoming Department of Education rules governing student transportation. Between the summer of 2018 and summer of 2019, the W D E revised the Chapter 20 rules, which are the rules for the student transportation component within the Education Resource Block Grant model. I'm very familiar with the changes because I was a pupil transportation supervisor at the W D E when the rules were, were revised to incorporate several legislative mandates and promote efficiencies in student transportation. Under the direction of the State Legislative Joint Education Committee, the W D E created a committee of stakeholders that updated the rules and sought efficiencies as part of the statewide effort to close the education budget gap. During the revision, the rule for no transportation zones was appoint the revision committee considered at length. Federal law only mandates transportation for certain groups of students, namely those with disabilities and students considered to be in transition according to the McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistance, homelessness assist, I'm sorry, Homeless Assistance Act. Transportation for other students is provided by Wyoming districts as a service, as far as districts can provide that service. Transportation is not an entitlement for students that do not fall into one of the groups previously mentioned. In districts that provide student transportation, no transportation zones are almost a universal practice across the nation to constrain resource requirements, namely personnel and, and funding challenges. During the revision committee meetings, Laramie County School District One opposed changing the rule from the limitations that were in force at that time. Previous to the rule that was just published this last year, the radius for elementary school was a one-mile radius. It was 1.5 miles for junior high and two miles for high schools. If a, if a district had a routing system, an automated routing system or software, then short path distance was allowed and those were 1.2 miles, 1.7 and 2.2 miles respectively for elementary, junior high and high school. In Wyoming, the state rule governing no transportation zone defines the area encompassed by one-mile radius from school for elementary students and two miles from school for secondary students as no transportation zone. Here in LCSD One, we have established no transportation zones around every school in the district. As a reference point, we researched no transportation zones in some of our neighboring states. We found that in Colorado, it's one, one mile for, for elementary, 1.2, 1.5 miles for middle school and two miles for high school. In Idaho, there's no state rule. It's a district discretion. However, state law says that 1.5 miles is the farthest a home address can be from, from a school or a bus stop. In Montana, the state law is three miles, but the districts also have discretion to modify that. And Great Falls, for example, has a one-mile radius for elementary, 1.5 for middle school and two miles for high school. In Nebraska, the state mandates a four-mile no transportation zone. And some districts even charge families for student transportation. In New Mexico, it's one mile for elementary, 1.5 miles for middle school and two miles for high school. Here in the district, we calculate the radius from the center of the school as best we can determine. If the boundary of the no transportation zone bisects any part of a student's residence, that student is eligible for transportation. If the boundary bisects a property but not the residence, the student is not eligible for transportation. When the W D E changed the no transportation zone rule, there was no intent to require students that reside in the no transportation zone to walk to school. In fact, the terminology was changed from walk zone to no transportation zone to better communicate the intent. The state was simply saying that the transportation services are not available to students in the no transportation zone for the reasons already discussed. Recognizing that some families would choose to have their students walk to school, LCSD One used the existing Transportation Advisory Committee comprised of a board member, district administrators, school administrators, transportation personnel and parents to develop criteria that are used to assess hazards in no transportation zones and for eligible students that walk to their bus stops. The Transportation Advisory Committee considered the conditions unique to both urban and rural settings and developed criteria for both after reviewing criteria used by other states with similar, similar demographics. The hazards attack sought to mitigate or outlined in the Chapter 20 rules and, as Mr. Bartlett mentioned, include rivers, railroad tracks, multi-lane roads with inadequate pedestrian crossings, or the lack of adequate walkways or pathways. Knowing much of the year can produce inclement weather here in Wyoming and the need to be personally prepared, weather is not considered a hazardous condition. Mr. Bartlett also mentioned the latitude the board has regarding the rule. And in Chapter 20, it specifically says that a school board may, by official action each year, transport students within the no transportation zone if there is a barrier that prevents a student from walking to school or a safety hazard exists that could harm the student. During the revision process and especially during discussions regarding no transportation zones, the committee sought to ensure the safe transit of students to school. The committee heard several examples of alternative means of transit for students to safely reach school. For example, self-or-family transport, locking school buses and space-available transportation. For some time, Laramie County School District Number One has offered students that are not eligible for transportation services the possibility of space-available transport on established district routes. Non-eligible students can submit space-available applications to ride on existing bus routes. The applications are approved on a first come, first served basis if the number of transportation-eligible students that ride that particular bus has not reached the maximum passenger capacity. We have processed more than half of the space-available applications we have received so far this school year and have been able to accommodate an overwhelming majority of those with space-available busing. Finally, I'd like to address what seems to be the public impression that the board can change the rule. The W D E is the proponent for the Chapter 20 rules that govern student transportation and the district is bound to follow the rules or risk losing state reimbursement for the transportation services we provide. The criteria used to assess hazards in the no transportation zones were developed to remote, remove emotion and politics, account for differences in urban and rural settings, and to ensure consistent application of the rule across the triads. We review routes annually to ensure we consider changing conditions that may or may not warrant the provision of transportation. If LCSD One does not follow the chap, follow the Chapter 20 rules, the State Department of Audit could identify areas of non-compliance and issue findings during its regular audits of the district. If those findings indicate the district received reimbursement for non-compliant operations, the state will recoup those funds. I'm not sure he's prepared to do so this evening, but our business manager, Mr. Siccarelli, is better suited to explain that process and provide examples of instances when the state has recouped funds. At this time, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Mr. Bowlen.
If we, as a board, if we approve allowing some students to ride buses that couldn't before, do we get reimbursed? Is it okay for us to be reimbursed if we approve those?
So, what happens, Madam Chair and, and Mr. Bowlen? If a student applies for space-available busing, that's based on existing routes already. If those routes aren't transporting their capacity, their, their maximum capacity and there's a seat available, then we have the latitude to provide that student a seat on that bus. And the state will still reimburse us because we'd be running those routes anyway. It's just that excess capacity exists and we can take on additional students. The only caveat is that, I'm sorry?
So, Mr. Budd, would, would we change a route or would the student have to walk to a bus stop that's already established?
The student would have to walk to a bus stop that is already established.
Yeah, I was talking more along the lines, if we were to find a hazard there and it would create a big, would we get reimbursed for those?
Yes, that is correct. If the, the board perceives a hazard, then we can transport within a no transportation zone and still be reimbursed by the state.
But during their audit, they would check to make sure that indeed really was a hazard, right?
That is correct. But there is some latitude there for the, the board and the Transportation Advisory to determine what a hazard is.
Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Madam Chair, Mr. Budd, you know, what I find really, really wonderful, if you made your statement was the part here that transportation provided by the school district is a service and not a right. It's a privilege. And I, I think one of the problems we're confronted with here in the pub, with the public is, I think people come to believe that riding on the school bus is a right. And maybe there's a necessity on our part to educate the public that it's a service that we provide underneath the rules provided by the Wyoming Department of Education, Chapter 20. What are your thoughts to that?
Chair, Mr. Green, I appreciate those thoughts. I think there is obviously a, a need for educating the public. And as I stated earlier, federal law only mandates that we transport certain groups of students.
I would, I would just remind the board that we've talked about this for over a year and talked about getting people in to talk about the, the rules and regs as they were being changed. So, I, we, this isn't, this is not a new issue to you guys. I know it is to some people out there. We've done, tried to do a pretty good job of sending out letters over the summer and, even last year, sending out information about the new rule changes to see if people would comment on. I would share with you that I was in the recalibration committee meeting today with legislators. And there were some legislators, when the recommendation for transportation came down to be 100% reimbursed again, and the upcoming, from the consultants and the upcoming new work with the, the funding model, that they felt like they may need to readdress the no transportation zones and expand those even farther to help reduce funding.
Or simply to reduce funding on the principle of the thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Weider, respond. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. So, the parents that I talked to really consider this issue a safety issue. And most of their concerns center around weather-related issues. So, I understand that according to the rules, weather is not considered a hazardous condition. I, I really have to wonder about the wisdom of whoever might have come up with that. Because I think in, in Wyoming, certainly, weather can be a hazardous condition. We all have experienced it. Now, hopefully, that, you know, the district would cancel school when the weather is considered to be hazardous and unsafe for students to be going to school. And I understand that this is one of those no-wind situations. You can't, to have a, a six- or seven-year-old student or an eight, even an eight-year-old student walk a mile in what might be considered a blizzard makes no sense to me as a parent. And most parents can make accommodations for their students to see if they don't have to walk that distance, but there are some parents that cannot. And I really applaud you and your department for, for providing the opportunity on a space-available basis for current routes for some students that can make it to a bus stop so they wouldn't have to walk all, all that distance to, to school in bad weather conditions. And they might have some health-related concerns that don't qualify them for transportation under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, where transportation is considered a related service for special ed students. And we provide transportation to those students. So, just as one board member that talks to parents that have concerns about that, I think it's, they incorrectly believe that we, as a board, can remedy that situation kind of just because we want to. And it's clear that we just can't do that. And we have to follow the rules like everyone else. And I'm sure you all get these telephone calls from parents. What's wrong with you guys? Why are you making my student walk to school in this crappy weather? And can't we provide some opportunity? And so, I know you do the best you can. I think we've got a terrific transportation department and I, my hat's off to you and I think you do a great job. But it's one of those things where the state is in a position where they're trying to save money. It costs money to transport students and education is in a serious financial crisis right now in the state. But sometimes you have to wonder, when someone says that weather really can't be a hazardous condition, I really question the wisdom of that. You know, I think there are times when it certainly can be. And it is, in fact, a hazardous condition when school is in session and not canceled. So, it's, it's, it's a difficult situation. I don't sit here and pretend to have all the answers to that. I don't know what the answers are. But I know that we, kids should not be put in harm's way. I know, as, I know as a principal, elementary principal, I used to go pick up students at their homes periodically when they couldn't get them, the parents couldn't provide transportation and there was no bus route where they normally would walk. So, it's a difficult situation and, and hopefully, at some point, we're going to be able to try to accommodate most of those concerns of the parents out there that do their best to keep their kids safe and wonder why we, as elected officials, can't fix every problem that arises. But I thank you for your hard work and thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Weider, respond. Just one little quick response to that is, we know that weather can be different and timely across the district and we're, we're always open for parents to excuse their students for weather if they don't feel like they can get their kids to school. As you're aware, we, we've had delays at schools, different schools over, over different times. And we've even had some power delays today and, and things like that at some of our rural schools. So, we're very cognizant of that and, and we want to make sure that. So we're very cognizant of that and we want to make sure that parents are in charge of that and they can always excuse their student for a weather incident.
Okay, Ms. Hyler, Ms. Rennie?
Well, I have a question. So you talked about qualifying conditions and special needs and special ed students as a qualifying condition. What if a household had a special needs child and a non-special need child? Would, would we only provide transportation for the special needs child or could we encompass the other child in that if we needed to provide that, that support for them?
Madam Chair, Ms. Story Hyler, in the past, pre-COVID, the space available application could be used to also request transportation for that sibling that was not special needs. In this current environment, we hesitate to do that because many of the special needs students have underlying conditions that put them at greater risk to the effects of, of the virus. So we're still considering those on a case-by-case basis. This year, we have approved a couple siblings, but not so much just as a space available basis, but as also a measure to help assist with the special needs student or sibling.
Good, thank you. Thank you for that. And one more follow-up. These are, like Mr. Weider said, these are, these are tough decisions because it's almost like a domino effect. Although I am passionate and I can understand where some of these families are coming from, if we open up this, then it opens up to all the other areas that will then also say that they're, they have those issues. So we really, I like what you said, it's educating people about where this started. It didn't start with us. We're just following the mandates that we were given and this is what we're left with. And just really knowing where this started, place the blame back where it needs to go.
Ms. Rennie, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things. This, our Chapter 20 rules apply to all of the districts in the state of Wyoming. So there's areas all over Cheyenne that parents are experiencing the, you know, the repercussions of, of these, the implementation of these rules and all over Casper and all over Gillette and all of our other larger districts. So we're all kind of trying to figure this out as we go, but thinking a little bit out of the box and having a great conversation with the parent earlier, last track of my days, I think it was yesterday. But anyway, we were trying to look at, would it be possible? I love the fact that we have the space available application and obviously I think that should be utilized and then that child could walk or, or that parent could get them to that already predetermined bus route so that they could be put on that space available bus. But would there be a possibility for maybe a partnership with the city in transporting students that are out of that, that transportation in the no transportation zone? Or I thought it was interesting going back to Nebraska. This parent said, you know, I would be willing to pay for my kid to have that transportation. Is that something that we would ever look at or consider or maybe get a think tank together to see if we could resolve some of these issues collaboratively with the city or parents or paying or something?
Madam Chair, Trustee Rennie, at this time, I don't believe that the, the state rule accommodates, you know, us charging parents for transportation. One thing that, you know, is possible is if parents in a community or neighborhood got together and wanted to contract with a, a transportation provider, they could certainly do that. But as a district and maybe Mr. Siccarelli can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that we could charge at this time, given the, the rules that are in place.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Bud is correct in the, the sense that if, if we were to charge for those type of services under 100% reimbursement model, it's entirely likely that the state would reclaim that revenue back under the, the block grant provision. So any charge that we would potentially levy in that situation would be recaptured by the state. So I would concur with Mr. Bud's assessment that it wouldn't be a feasible option for us.
Thank you. She just thought parents would be willing to pay, so I thought I'll get that out there. Thank you.
And, and thank you. And I, I just want to reiterate and Mr. Weider Spahn made reference to it and he did also that this is, was at the direction, if not by legislation, at the direction of the legislature to try to save money. I mean, it all comes down to cost saving and what we are allowed to, to do with state funds. And so we don't really have latitude to, to do much within that realm unless the, the WDE changes the rule at the Big Hester Legislature, which looks unlikely at this juncture, I would have to say. So, thank you. Oh, yes, Mr. Bowlin.
Are you finding, as you go through those requests for space available, are they coming from a particular part of town or are they spread throughout the town?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bowlin, we have seen a, certainly an increase in number from one neighborhood and that is because this was the first year that we implemented in more consistently the no transportation zones. It's probably, I would say about 30, 70%, 30% from one particular neighborhood and 30% spread throughout the rest of the district.
So is there a lot of space available on the surrounding bus stops to accommodate some of those people then?
There are, yes. This year, because of COVID, we looked at our eligible riders or eligible students that could potentially ride and we programmed equipment to accommodate those, that number of eligible students. We're transporting about at half capacity. You know, because of COVID, we're, our 72 passenger buses are transporting about 42 total passengers. And so we added equipment to accommodate the, the total eligible students and we found that there's space so far to accommodate the overwhelming majority of the requests that we've received for space available busing.
One last question. We have this transportation program that we have, or package that we have, is it possible for that package to put together some carpooling things for those students who we can't accommodate with our space available?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bowlin, are you referring to the Transportation Advisory Committee?
No, I'm talking about the software.
Oh, the software, I'm sorry.
But it also maybe suggests to some parents, you know, this may be a carpool group that might get together somehow?
I, I think from a sense of actually assigning students to that type of a program. I don't know that we would go that far, but we could certainly use it to analyze those area where there, areas where there are concentrations of students that might be able to get together as families to do something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rennie.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the end of my reports tonight. Fairly lengthy, sorry about that again, but felt like you needed some more information. So appreciate you allowing us the time.
And I, I appreciate staff being available and so forthcoming with our questions. As you notice, a lot of people were forwarding questions that they have received themselves over the past couple of weeks and so it's, appreciate the ability to get good, clear information that is now recorded and people can go back and watch and so thank you for that. And now we're up to the consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing committee and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So at this time, does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam Chair, I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda. Second, there's a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Sorry, old business.
New business.
I mean, new business. Madam Chair, I move to approve the grant, a fund transfer of $300,000 from instructional, instruction support to fund transfers. Second? You heard the motion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion for the budget amendment for FY 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion is adopted.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a no-cost lease of softball fields from the city of Cheyenne.
Second? For the motion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion for permission to lease softball fields from the city of Cheyenne, say aye. Opposed, no. That motion is adopted.
Madam Chair, I move to grant permission to provide facility space for the Cheyenne Parks and Recreation Gymnastics Program.
Second? For the motion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion for permission to provide facility space for Cheyenne Parks and Rec Gymnastics Program, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion is adopted.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Cheyenne for facilities and transportation.
Second? For the motion, any discussion? Yes?
I just had a question, kind of seems like weeks or months ago. Mr. Bartlett can probably answer this. We were talking about, oh gosh, it was still when we were still doing a lot of Zoom stuff. We were talking about when the kids get on the bus to go to the Boys and Girls Club, were they going to be, would they have their temperatures taken when they get on the bus again or how did that get resolved?
Madam Chair, Ms. Rennie, they will actually be screened when they get to the Boys and Girls Club.
Or at the facility. Okay. All right. And then, so that's my only question, but I, I did want to comment on, I just, I appreciate, when I read through all this, I just appreciate, one, I appreciate working with the Boys and Girls Club and what they, the services that they provide to our community and, and you guys trying to work through everything. I, I appreciate the fact that there was the notation put in there to come back and review if the Chapter 20 rules were changed and also putting in there that the quarantine or, or pandemic epidemic rules would, you know, they, you would negotiate those terms out etc. So again, I just appreciate the fact that you all have worked, the Boys and Girls Club and their staff have worked along with the district so well as to provide these services for our students and our communities. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Cheyenne, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion is adopted. And now we're up to future business. The next regular board meeting will be held virtually, seeing us in person and the, and staff in person and the rest virtually on Monday, September 21st, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. with the work session at 5:00 p.m. And we are at our second opportunity for public comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Before we do public comment, I just wanted to take a minute and let you know that we had a problem tonight and we're not sure why, but our live feed to YouTube did not work. So we still haven't recorded, so we'll be able to put it up tomorrow, but we had some issue there where it wouldn't work. I know the title tried it a couple of different ways here and then he tried it from a regular computer in his office and we couldn't get it to work. So we did not get the livestream to work tonight and I, we'll, we'll figure that out, but just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone's hands raised, but if I, with your indulgence, I would like to take the opportunity to mention two things that I had, had not mentioned earlier. First of all, and I, while we did eventually get to it, just to remind people, the survey on the Residence Area Resolution is on our website. If you want to comment, please have your comment into us by September 15th. The survey is there. And also that I am the state coordinator for the high school mock trial competition and the case is ready to go. And so, and if you're interested in coaching, helping to coach or coach, being the main coach for our high school mock trial team, see me and I'll give you the case and it's a, it's a home bingo this year. So I think, I think you'd enjoy it. The plan is to do, to zoom in teams around the state if possible. We're going to do it virtually and see how that works. So let me know if you're interested in all and helping out and anyone watching, parents or teachers and that sort of thing. So anyway, that's mock trial 2020 and we're going to, we're going to see if we can do it over Zoom. And I believe that concludes our business. Dr. Brown, so.
All we need is to.
Yes, yes. Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I move to adjourn. Second? For the motion, all those in favor say aye.
We do.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.